Good morning. The City of Boston's zoning board of appeal for March 22nd is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until July 15th, 2022. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meeting, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who are closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raised hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the ambassador sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Again, if you are here by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand and star six to unmute yourself. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then can provide the comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. These instructed instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. So let's go and get a roll call. Mr. Fortune?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Olick.
I'm here.
Excellent. Ms. Dong?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Mr. Rugiro?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Oh, good morning. Mr. Robinson?
Good morning.
Good morning. Am I missing anybody? Mr. Hampton?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. So this is a six-member board, and so I'm just informing all applicants that they will need five votes in support of your project for the motion to carry. So this tells me that applicants do have the option to request an administrative deferral. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of March 8th of 2022. We need a motion.
Motion approved.
There are seven. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next order is the extensions, calling the first case, case BOA 659702, 86 to 88 North Washington Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Dennis Quilty, attorney representing the appellant. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Quilty.
Thank you.
For 8688 North Washington Street, the board originally granted this relief on May 26th of 2017. The case was appealed to Superior Court, and so is the subject to litigation tolling. The court case was dismissed on June 5th of 2019 with litigation tolling. The new expiration of the relief would have been May 16th of 2021. However, the COVID-19 pandemic occurred, so the relief is subject to COVID tolling as well. The board previously granted an extension to this matter, but that was unnecessary because of tolling. With COVID tolling, the new expiration date for relief is August 21st of 2022. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that relief remains valid until that date. The applicant now also requests an additional extension of May 4th of 2023. I recommend that the board grant that additional extension if it determines that it is appropriate under the circumstances, taking into account that this would only be the applicant's first necessary extension.
May I have a motion?
Motion to concur with the recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next case is being withdrawn, but I'm going to call it in for the record, case BOA 927849, 48 to 62 Brooklyn Avenue. I know Mr. Quilty is on. Could you just put your name in the record for the record, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Dennis Quilty, attorney representing the appellant at this location. Further to discussions, I've had with Attorney Broom. We withdraw this matter, and I have filed, as of yesterday, a request for a board final arbiter on this. This is a matter concerning the expiration date. Yes, yes.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for denial without prejudice.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case for extension, case BOA 909744, 11th Ruggles Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacass, Lacass Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Lacass. This is regards to 11 Ruggles Street. The board originally granted this relief on March 29th of 2019, and it granted the first extension of that relief until March 29th of 2022. However, that extension was unnecessary. With tolling, the original relief remains valid until July 4th of 2022. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that relief remains valid until that date. The applicant now also requests an additional extension until July 4th of 2023. I recommend that the board grant that additional extension if it determines that it is appropriate under the circumstances, taking into account that this would only be the applicant's first necessary extension.
Motion to concur with the recommendation.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case for rediscussion, case BOA 1258629, 39 Hancock Street. This is a combined lot of 2,881 square feet and another lot of 2,304 square feet to create one new lot tolling 5,185 square feet, to be known as 39 Hancock, and erecting new, reduced from a four-family to a three-family residential structure with five off-street parking. The violation is Article 65, Section 42, conforming to an existing building alignment. Article 65, Section 9, the lot width is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the foyer ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 65, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, side yard is insufficient, and Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with the Law Office of Drago and Toscano, with the business address of 11 Beacon Street, representing the owner developer Willie Mandrell for the project at 39 Hancock Street. As was mentioned, so this project had been deferred and has been modified since that last deferral. We have removed a fourth unit, so we are now at three units, residential units, and five parking spaces. In making that modification, we've removed violations and modified some violations. We eliminated the heightened feet, going down from 39 feet, 5 inches to 31 feet and 6 inches. We also eliminated the use violation, because we have now gone from a four-unit building to a 3F, which is allowed in the district. We've also reduced our FAR coming from a 1.2 down to a 0.78 FAR.
So, Counselor, just as I've always stated in the past to you, we are kind of not interested on where you started off, but where you bounce off from the zoning. So tell me, so obviously, this is a 3F district. What's the lot size on this?
So this is a 3F 5,000 district combined. We have two lots, Madam Chair. That equals 5,185 square feet.
Okay, and so please talk through the violations.
Sure. Our violations are lot width and lot frontage, so 50 would be required. We have 38 feet, 2 inches. FAR, 0.5 would be allowed. We are now at 0.78. Height, I mentioned, we did remove stories, but we, I'm sorry, feet. We do still have stories, so we have three stories and 2 and 1/2 feet is what's allowed, but that's typical of this area. It's a 3F district. Side yard, although we do have a driveway, we do have, on the right side, our driveway, but we have 1 foot on the left-hand side, and 5 feet would be required, but there is a driveway on the left-hand side as well to the neighboring building. Front yard, we actually have 7'6 and 15 would be required. We were specifically asked to match the building next to us and working with the community. Rare setback, 18 would be required because of the shallow lot exception, and we are at 10. And I mentioned the other violations that we did eliminate. I can go over the floor plan with you.
So, Counselor, there's no roof deck proposed?
There is not. There's only two front decks at the front side of the building.
Okay, and just tell us, will any of the units be accessible?
They will. The first floor unit is accessible via ramp. It comes around the side of the building from where the parking would line up and comes in right through the front.
Okay, and speak to us about how the parking is proposed to work, and tell us what sheet we should be looking at?
So there is a certified plot plan that lays this out. I don't know. The plan's up right now? There's a whole certified plot plan section, and it shows five parking spaces. What we've done is the, oh, sorry. The lot that abuts Payson Ave has five-angle parking spaces. That would be, parking would be accessed through Hancock on a 10-foot driveway. That would come down the side of the building when enter those diagonal spots. Originally, we had a curb cut along Payson, so you would enter through Hancock, exit through Payson, and working with the community, they wanted that sealed off, just some grass area and fencing, because Payson Ave has had a lot of vehicular issues with cars racing down the street, so we have everything entering and entering along Hancock. When you pull out of those spaces, you can back up. We have a paver area, a 10-foot paver area in the back, that those cars would back into and then be able to pull out the front way through Hancock.
How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. I think the scale and height of the current proposal fits on Hancock Street. It is tight on the sort of side yard dimensions, but it is up against a retail at the corner, so no real questions about the proposal.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Denise De Santos here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on record and state that the applicant has met with the community a few different times and has met with the community's needs. They have direct abutter support and Main Street support. At this time, our office would like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe McEckern, City Counselor, Frank Baker's office would like to go on record and support.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have letters of support as well.
Is there anything from Mr. D'Amico on this?
I'm out, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, there is a maneuverability diagram on A100 that does show how the vehicle access and backing up into the area that Counsel sort of explained. It seems to work fairly well, not perfect, but I think it went well.
Yeah. Mr. Fortune, anything on the record from Mr. D'Amico?
No, Madam Chair, there's nothing from Mr. D'Amico.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Noss, anybody else?
Yeah, I do have a raised hand from Joseph. Joseph, are you looking to give testimony on this case? If not, I will. Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, was that a question for me?
Yeah, your hand is raised. Are you looking to give testimony on this?
You just did.
Oh, you did? Okay, sorry. Yeah, all right.
Yeah, sorry, we just testified.
No worry, I have no additional raised hand as of now.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review and focusing a little, make sure that there's adequate buffering on Payson Ave for the parking. So I guess.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Before we begin our 9:30 hearings, just a reminder, this is a six-member board, and applicants need five members in support of their project for the motion to carry. Thus, applicants do have the option for asking for an administrative deferral.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call the 9:30 hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for the 9:30? If you could just give me the address first, please. Hearing none? I'll call the first case.
I have a deferral.
Sure, what's the address, ma'am?
1472 Center Street, BOA 12734.
Hold on two seconds. For the record, calling BOA 1273426, 1472 Center Street. Name an address for the record, please.
This is Chloe Manning, representing Arthur Chu's office, 1 Billings Road, Quincy,
What are you, are you requesting a deferral?
We're requesting a deferral to revise the plans based on neighborhood feedback.
Okay, and how long do you think that will take?
Maybe two, few months.
A few months? So is June perfect for you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, may I have a motion, please? Motion for deferral?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Date, please.
You'll have a June 7th at 11:30.
Thank you.
Welcome. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30? Hearing none, I'll call the first case. Calling case BOA 1295354, 6 Yarmouth Street. This is to remove the existing fire escape and replace with rear porches and exterior fire stair, and removing the existing ground-level deck and building new patio and fencing. The violation is Article 64, Section 9.4, townhouse row house extension. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Ryan Spitz of Counsel to Adams and Marancy with the business address of 350 West Broadway. Here with me today is the owner and also slash architect, Mr. David O'Sullivan. As stated, this is a proposal to remove an existing fire escape on the rear of the property and replace with new rear porches and a new exterior fire stair for safer means of egress. On the first and second floor, a window will be converted into a door for a means of egress. On the third floor, a whole new door opening will be constructed for egress. The decks will be approximately 6 feet by 12 feet. Also, an existing ground floor patio will be replaced with a small-size patio paver at approximately 11 feet by 10 feet. And also, a 6-foot wood fence will be included in the scope of the work. The parking area, as you'll see from these plans, will remain the same. At this point in time, I can open it up for questions, but prior to then, the owner did have a preliminary discussion with the South End Landmarks, and under item 3, under the general guidelines, it does not apply, as it is not in the front of the building or nor visible from, on top of the roof is nor visible. So in the rear, the standards do not apply here for the South End Landmarks.
So are you saying that this is not bracket-supported, then?
I'm going to have to defer. David, would you say this is bracket-supported?
No, it is supported on steel posts, thin steel posts, and metal railings, much like most the others down the street are. So there's two posts coming down for the deck, and then a couple posts at the end for the stairwells.
So was second means of egress provided in the interior of the building, and now you're moving it to the exterior? Is that what's happening here?
No, there was an existing fire escape that came down from the third floor, second floor, first floor, with a ladder to the ground that existed now, connecting windows and fire escape, and this is to replace that with the decks and stair.
Okay.
It's a little unusual in the sense that my neighbor to my left from the back, it sticks out, and their fire escape from the front, and my neighbor to the right of me sticks out farther than me, and they have a separate fire escape. So instead of being able to have a balcony that connects units, there's no ability on my unit to connect to another one, hence the need for the stair.
Okay, and did you check any other options that would give you a less impactful project in the rear yard?
As far as the decks or the stairs you're talking about?
Stairs.
Stairs. I had looked, I had looked at a spiral stair going down, but was seeing that this was much safer, and where the buildings on either side of me stick out beyond me, didn't think this was too much of an impact of...
Okay, cool. Thank you. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, and I agree. Both of his abutters do protrude out back into the alleyway, so I think it's, it'll be fairly minimal in terms of its visual impact on the rear alley as a percentage.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kim Cruzila with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office held an abutters meeting in February of 2022, where support was shown by the abutters. They also received the support of the Cosmopolitan Neighborhood Association. At this time, our office would like to defer to the board on this matter. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flink's office. The Counselor would like to go on record in support based on feedback from abutters and no issues reported by the Cosmopolitan Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary, we have a couple letters of support.
Thank you.
I do have one raised hand. Go ahead, concerned neighbor. You've been unmuted. Can you state your name and full address for the record, please?
My name is James O'Connor. I was calling about, did I just hear that 1472 was deferred?
Can you, can you just, can you take that offline, please? Mr. Hampton, did the BPDA have a recommendation on this?
No official recommendation, but we understand, based on what the existing conditions are and the problem with connecting to the buildings, usually we support bracket only, but since this is a fire escape, we can, we don't need design review, but we can go on record as in support of this proposal.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck. Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 1289700, 559R Rear, East 5th Street. This is a structure, is a three-story, three-condo building. Owner of condo 3 will construct a porch measuring 6 by 8 to both condo 3 and condo 2. Upon complete completion, owner of condo 2 will reimburse the owner for condo 3 for half the total cost. The violation is Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restrictions, the access. Article 68, Section 8, insufficient side yard setback, and Article 68, Section 8, insufficient reg yard setback. Name an address for the record, please. Mr. Mohan on?
Hi, Bill has his hand raised. Can I have one second?
Okay, I'll go to the next case.
He might be here. Bill, is that, are you here for this proposal?
I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
You got it? Okay. My name is William Mohan. Address is 59 Carding Road in Norton, Massachusetts. I'm representing Dana and Darren Hopkinson, the owners of condo number 3, third floor at 559R. We're also speaking for the owners of the second floor that are going to be involved in this as well. The denial letter that we got in...
Mr. Mohan?
Yes.
May I just kick it off and ask you? When was this project constructed?
This project was constructed in February of 2021.
Okay, so that was...
That's the date on the plans that you have.
Okay, so this is new construction?
Yes.
And so if it's an R address, it needed to come to this board. Can you tell us, you know, were there any provisos? Because we probably approved it without decks, and so can you tell us what the need is for this decks now?
The need for the decks is twofold. It's not, they're not decks. There's 6-foot by 6-foot porches in the right rear of the building. There is no, this has nothing to do with the roof structure. It's just the second floor and the third floor will have a deck, decks 6 feet by 6 feet coming off the kitchen. There's two reasons for that. Number one, this structure has sprinkler system, and it so, only has one method of egress, and that's the stairways to the front door. We're concerned in two cases. Number one, the first and most important is safety. We would like to have a ladder, fire ladder, you know, from the third floor to the second floor, and the second floor to the first floor, just in case there's a, we can't get out the front door.
Okay, hold on, hold on. I'm a little bit confused.
Okay.
Because the drawing in front of us does show us a roof deck. So is the roof deck part of the plan or not?
No, no, no. That was, I don't know why you have that plan. There is no roof deck. We're not touching the roof. We had filed, in 2021, we had filed for a roof deck, and we submitted plans, but we were told that there was a verbal agreement with the neighborhood and Neighborhood Association never to put a roof deck on that building, which was not told to us.
Okay.
But we, we...
So, Mr. Mohan, may I ask you one more question?
Sure.
Your rear, your rear yard is insufficient. So tell me your distance from your building to the rear yard and to the building behind you, because this is what makes it hard for us, because, because we have heard this case, we've approved plans for this case, and then it gets difficult when they come into us again, you know, a couple years later, when, with requests for things that might have been already sorted out during the initial hearing.
Okay. I'd be happy to. And that's one of the points that I would like to make. If you look at the plot plan that was submitted with this, and we have two different drawings that were submitted by... and, and we have two different drawings that, that were submitted by two different companies. Uh, the, the distance from the, for the rear, uh, is, is listed as, as, uh, three, three-point-nine feet. Uh, now, there's a problem with that now because the rear neighbor, uh, put in a fence. And in order to get around the tree, uh, most of that fence is on our property. Now, that's, that's, that, that can be, uh, adjudicated in a, in another, at another time with another, uh, committee. But that's one of the, the problems that we have and, uh, uh, and in some, but the, the, a lot of.
Just, can you, can just answer my question because I might have missed it? What's the distance bef- between the proposed deck and, and your property line?
There's, there's, there's no, there's no difference. It's three-point-nine feet. That's, that's the distance from, from the house. The, the, the deck, uh, porch, I should say, fits into the right rear corner. Uh, and we made it, we made, we made it six by six so that it doesn't increase the dis- or shorten the distance to the rear or the distance to the side. These are the same exact measurements as you approved when this was constructed, I believe in two thousand nineteen.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are fine. Uh, uh, agree with the proponent. It aligns with the rear of the building, so it's not increasing or decreasing the setback. There is a drawing in here that shows the roof deck access with a spiral stair. It is flagged in red, but it's not Xed out. But I'm not sure why that's in there either. But the basic proposal seems to be, um, fitting within the context of the existing bill. So, no, no questions.
Any questions from the board?
Uh, Mr. Robinson, the, the, uh, idea of a fire ladder from, uh, three to two to one, uh, in terms of second means of egress, um, that's a little on the shaky side, isn't it? Wouldn't you agree?
I, I mean, it's not even, it's not required because the building apparently is sprinkled and so I think it's an extra means, I would assume. But I, I agree that it's not ideal either, but, um, I think that's, should be handled. Uh, you know, that's not necessarily for us to, I think, understand or handle.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, I don't disagree with you, Mr. Urle, yeah.
Anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Healy Dillon Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, this is one of those weird instances, like Madam Chair referred to. When I held the abutters meeting for this building in two thousand nineteen, the neighbors and the neighborhood association agreed for no outdoor space, no roof decks, no decks, because this building is set back in the middle of other people's backyards. So they got the approval of the neighbors and they got their variances to build this house. And the people who bought it didn't understand the agreement. Um, we do still have direct abutters in opposition to, um, decks and roof decks, but we would like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in opposition based on feedback from neighbors, abutters, and the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association, who have all called attention to concerns on noise disruption and quality of life, of life issues for neighbors on three different streets, K Street, Fifth Street, and Sixth Street. Moreover, the previous project was supported by neighbors, the CIV group, Mayor's Office, and Councilor Flynn, specifically because there was no deck included in that proposal. Again, we, um, the council would like to oppose due to the opposition from neighbors and the civic organization as this quality of life issues have been significant concerns for years in the community and unfortunately exacerbated over the course of the pandemic. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty. Council Flaherty would like to note that the building was permitted and built with the proviso from this board that no roof deck be built due to various concerns from direct abutters. He has issues with the decks. Uh, therefore, Council Flaherty would like to go on record in strong opposition.
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, I have no, no raised hands at this moment.
Can you give us?
Madam Chair?
Is this Mr. Mohan? Give us a rebuttal.
Uh, what the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services failed to, to let the board know, we have, we have signed petitions from sixty-two neighbors.
Okay.
Uh, support, strongly supporting this.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the, the.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Thank you, thank you.
And you should, you should have a copy of those petitions. Uh, they were in the ZBA folder.
Thank you, we do, thank you. Now, please, Ms. Ambassador, can you mute, uh, Mr. Mohan? Can I have a motion, please?
Yeah. I, 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 before, I do think that, um, they're not asking for a lot, but unbeknownst to them, this was approved very recently with certain provisos and I do think we need to stick to those. And it's unfortunate that they weren't informed of that at the time they bought their condo. Um, but that being said, I'd like to make a motion for the denial.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
No, I can't. There, I mean, I, I just want to clarify for the board that there, there are two provisos on this decision from two thousand nineteen. They're for BPDA design review with attention to utilities and no building code relief. There's nothing about a roof deck in the board's decision on this case.
Okay, but regardless, we do understand that it might have not been, uh, because the plans might have come in without a roof deck. And that might be the, what, what we need to make sure we clarify when we do, uh, minutes or make sure that it's memorialized in some way in the text in addition to having it memorialized in the plans. And I think as, um, we talked about last week, this becomes more important as things go up to the registry. So, um, Miss, uh, Mr. Rogiro, you had a motion for denial?
Correct.
Is there a second?
Uh, I.
Second. All of those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Sorry about that.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one two nine four nine nine eight seventy-one to seventy-five West Broadway. This is to change a legal occupancy in existing unoccupied commercial unit to bank. Building occupancy to be changed from eight residential units and one commercial unit to eight residential units and bank. The violation is Article sixty-eight, section thirty-three, off-street parking. Article sixty-eight, section seven. Use and regulations. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with a business address at three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair and members, I represent Jay Goldberg, who is the owner of the commercial unit at seventy-one seventy-five West Broadway and who is seeking to change its occupancy or to actually establish a legal occupancy for the commercial unit as a bank. Uh, the unit is sixteen hundred forty-four square feet. It is the ground floor unit in a building, uh, that contains this ground floor commercial space and eight residential units above. The building was approved in May of two thousand nineteen. Uh, at that time, it did in fact receive a variance for insufficient off-street parking as there is no parking associated with the building. My client would like to put in a bank tenant. He has had several banks approach him, uh, with their interest in moving into the unit, uh, but none would enter into a lease, uh, without having the occupancy in place. That occupancy requires a conditional use permit. And for the record, I would posit that this specific site is an appropriate location for a bank, that the bank would not adversely affect the neighborhood, nor would there be any hazard to vehicles or pedestrians from the use. I don't believe a bank would create any nuisance and, uh, any bank, uh, tenant would provide adequate and appropriate facilities for the proper operation of a bank at this location. Thank you.
Mr. Marancy, do we know what bank it is?
No, as I say, um, a number of banks have approached my client, but they did not want to go through the permitting process themselves. Uh, hence, my client wanted to establish the occupancy and then get back to the u-, uh, the, the banks that have expressed interest to select, uh, which one would go in.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are good. Uh, no questions on the proposal.
Anybody here to speak in support or opposition?
Hi, Madam Chair and members of the board. Healy Dillon Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support based on feedback from neighbors and support from the West Broadway Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have one opposition letter.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one two nine zero zero four zero eight Glade Avenue. This is to build a foundation and master bedroom with deck on the first and second and third floor. The violation is Article nine, section one, reconstruct an extension of a non-conforming building. Article fifty-five, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-five, section nine, the building height is excessive in feet. Article fifty-five, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. And Article fifty-five, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Keith Hensman, uh, forty-seven Ken Burma Street.
I'm sorry, your address again?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, uh, forty-seven Ken Burma Street in Hall, Massachusetts.
Okay, so please tell us what's being proposed?
So we've proposed, uh, in addition, that allows each unit to have an additional bedroom and en suite bath and closet with it. And the addition is off to the right side of the existing house. And, uh, we are maintaining the same building line of the rear wall of the house, um, with the extension. And, um, y- y- the idea is to, uh, keep the, the look and, uh, historic character of the existing house with the addition.
Okay, so tell us about the, um, distance from the proposed edge of the addition to the side, side lot line? And likewise for the window lot line?
Okay, uh, let me start with the rear lot line. So, uh, the existing rear porch is seventeen and a half feet from the rear lot line. And we're proposing, um, extending that existing, uh, porch. Uh, so no change to the rear yard setback.
And what's required?
And, uh, the rear.
Sorry, what's required under zoning?
Uh, twenty feet is in, and we have seventeen and a half. The rear wall of the house itself is, uh, further beyond at twenty-two and a half feet.
Okay, and tell us about this.
And, uh, yep, so, um, the, um, existing, uh, side yard, the, the, the lot is, uh, existing lot is quite large. Um, and the, um, side yard with the projecting bay will be in excess of thirty-three and a half feet. Uh, so we're, we're not encroaching on the side yard setback there. Uh, the opposite side of the building, uh, the left side of the building to the left lot line is, uh, just shy of ten feet, but, uh, we're not coming close to that. We're proposing an addition on the opposite side of the building.
How are the plans, um, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are good. Uh, you know, I think it's, it is an oversized lot. I think the addition is fairly minimal. It is not changing any of the sort of side or rear yard, um, as it currently sits. Um, I think it's pretty straightforward. And one question, are these owner-occupied units or are these rental units?
Yes, no, that's correct. They're owner-occupied and we have, uh, several letters in support. One from a direct abutter at six Glade.
So let me ask you one last question. What is the size of the lot?
So the lot is non-conforming, uh, it's just over seventy-five hundred square feet and we're in a two F nine thousand district, so would be required to be a nine thousand square foot lot.
Yeah, the base lot would be nine thousand and then, um, yep, forty-five hundred for which each additional. Okay, uh, any questions from the board?
Are, are there any renderings of, on the plans, or what it would look like?
Yes, there, there should be, uh, I believe on, on the first page of the PDF, there's a cover sheet. Um, and this has a view from the street. Perfect, that's it there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Tiffany Kawayeto here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on record to say this project proposal was approved by the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council zoning subcommittee back in January this year. Um, I did have no letters of, uh, or testimony in opposition. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. No one else has, you know?
Okay, um.
Hello, there's some comments from the BPDA.
Yes, Jeff, I was gonna call on you. Any comments from the BPDA?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, members of the board. We recommend a denial without prejudice, uh, based solely on the addition to the side. It's mainly a triple-decker, uh, street and the BPDA likes to keep the traditional triple-decker look. I know there's support for it, but it's just, uh, a precedent that we really don't want to have broached. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
I, I'll make a motion to approve, um, with BPDA design review. I think it's, um, a, a reasonable ask for an owner-occupied, uh, building.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will just voice my, um, my, my vote in opposition because I do believe, um, keeping the building form is important. But, um, motion carries. Was it for design review?
Yes.
Okay, cool, next, next question.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA eight six eight eight seven zero eight ten Canterbury Street. This is companion case, BOA eight six eight eight seven five eight twelve Canterbury Street. This is for eight ten. This is planning to erect a two-family home on six thousand two hundred and eight square foot lot. The violation is Article sixty-seven, section eight. A two-family detached dwelling unit is forbidden use. Article sixty-seven, section nine, the minimum lot width requirement is insufficient. Article sixty-seven, section nine, the minimum lot frontage is insufficient. Article sixty-seven, section nine, the minimum usable open space per unit is insufficient. Article sixty-seven, section nine, the front yard setback is insufficient. And Article sixty-seven, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. This is for eight twelve Canterbury, subdividing eight twelve Canterbury Street into two lots. Lot one will have seven thousand three hundred and eighteen square feet. Lot two will have six thousand twenty-eight square feet. The house at eight twelve will stay and a new house will be built at eight ten Canterbury. The violation is Article sixty-seven, section nine, lot width is insufficient. Article sixty-seven, section nine, lot frontage is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hey, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Uh, my name's Christopher Davey. I live at eight twelve Canterbury Street.
That was what's being proposed?
Um, I'm looking to divide my lot and build a two, two-family. The original plan, it was my grandfather's house. I was gonna buy the lot off him and build a two-family for my sister and I. Um, we started going through the, and he was gonna live in eight twelve. Um, we started the process. He passed away. There was a whole thing, you know, with probate and stuff. I ended up getting the house. COVID happened. Um, we still want to go through with the plans.
Okay, so, so yes, please tell us what you're proposing to do.
Um, just build a two, two-family house and there's a, there's a garage right now on the plans. You can see of, uh, the subdividing. That, that creates like a pork chop lot. Now that I have access, I have the surveyor. Um, we're gonna just make it a straight line. So lot one will be like seven thousand square feet and lot two will be six thousand three hundred. We're, we're gonna make, we're gonna, uh, fix the, the violations a little bit better, I guess.
Okay, so, so this district is a, uh, one F six thousand. So you're proposing the, um, the second house. So tell us about the second house. The one at eight ten Canterbury Street. So it's a two-family. Any occupancy in the basement?
No occupancy in the basement.
And no occupancy in the attic?
Nope.
Okay, will it be stick-built?
Yes.
Okay, how would the, and tell us how parking is proposed to work?
There's gonna be a proposed driveway with two parking spaces out back.
And will 812 Canterbury also have parking?
Yes, 812 Canterbury will have parking.
Okay, let's just see, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are pretty straightforward, no question. I guess my only question is, hearing the proponent, if he's going to change the lot dimensions, does that matter to us? I mean, I think in terms of weighing in where we are now.
Yes, you know, we usually care about that, but it seems that this is a 1F 6,000. And we very much think that we're not creating serious deficits for the existing building.
Okay. Yeah, no question other than that, in terms of the proposed project.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ujra Notsi with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. They did have, Christopher did have a community process. Only one person attended who was in support. My office did receive two letters of support for this. And he had met with the neighborhood association two or three years ago when they first proposed this and didn't have an issue with it. And I contacted them again just to see if they were still feeling the same way, and they said yes. And my office would like to defer judgment to the board.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have a few letters of support.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands, thank you.
Is anybody here from the City Council's office?
Yes, Madam Chair, Dustin from Councilor Worrell's office. We have no reason to oppose this project.
Please, Dustin, I'll put your last name on the record, too?
Dustin Gardner from City Council Worrell's office.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1212-750, 750 High Park Avenue. This is a raised ten-foot, raised roof, ten feet install underground sewage, demo the interior, and plan to convert to a car wash. Violation is Article 67, Section 8, use is conditional. Article 67, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback. Article 67, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback. Article 9, Section 2, the change in the non-conforming use. Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming dimensional side yard. Name and address for the record, please.
Clyde Nesbit, 750 High Park Ave. The current owner. Basically, there's plenty of space behind the property.
Please help us and describe what you have on site.
So it's currently a mechanic shop. It also has a bay door at the rear of the building where you already drive to the rear of the building already, which is the left side. That's already, that's already current. So the only thing that we have is about thirty-five feet left at the back of the building. So there's plenty of space to drive behind the building. The whole building's just gonna be a touchless car wash. No driving the car, we just drive into one place, uh, and the car wash, they would just go around the car wash the vehicles and then the vehicles would exit through the front of the building.
So do you also have a, so let me understand what's happening on the lot right now. It's auto repair, is it also towing?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's auto repair, it's towing, and now you want to add a-
No, we're gonna remove the automotive and the towing, and it's just gonna be a car wash.
It's gonna be a car wash, a complete car wash?
Totally a car wash, nothing else.
Okay, and so this is a 1F 6,000, so it's a residential district. Can you tell us how this would fit in with the neighbors around you?
I feel like it would be a great addition to the neighborhood since there's already so many mechanic shops in the area, including one across the street and which we own as well. We plan on adding a dog wash to help the neighborhood, so there's plenty of people that walk with their dogs and everything so that they can come in, get to groom their dogs personally. It'll also give jobs to the neighborhood to-
No, no, please, I want, I don't want to hear about everything else. I want to hear just about who your neighbors are. Are your neighbors-
Also, my neighbors-
-also in the residential use?
Yes, we had a, we had a meeting with them. They were, they seemed to be okay with the property, with the whole idea. Our butters behind us were a complete hundred percent behind the idea of having a car wash there. We have a new neighbor next door that his only opposition was the snow remover, but we told him we were helping with that, and that seemed to be-
This is, because I'm looking at map, at Google Maps, this is the residential piece, okay. So tell us exactly then, the building, will the building be demolished?
No, the building's gonna stay as it is. Only thing we're gonna do is raise the roof on the right side because the left side is already at the height that it needs to be. The right side just has to be raised about four or five feet.
Okay, and then tell us about the queuing because we approved a project on Blue Hill Ave for a car wash where they maintained there was no queuing and there was no queuing on the street. But subsequent to that, I did notice there's actually quite a long line on Blue Hill Ave. And then we've had, and then we've had the issue with the car wash on American Legion. So can you tell us how you're gonna prevent queuing on the street?
Well, we actually have the property across the street. So to keep the park, to keep the cars off the street, we plan on getting a parking area across the street for the vehicles to wait. And there's a substantial amount of yard space to be in line on that 750 property already.
So tell us, tell us what the capacity is for queuing. How many vehicles can you have for queuing?
So, so on the 750 property, we could have up to about ten, twelve cars. On the 749 side, where we plan to add the parking-
All we want to hear is about 750 because that's all the points.
FBBT, twelve, ten and fifteen cars.
Okay, will the curb cut be reduced in any way?
No, ma'am.
No?
No.
So, so it will continue not to be accessible to pedestrians? What are your proposed hours of operation?
From six to ten.
Seven days a week?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let me just see, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
I mean, I guess I would say the general plan is fine in terms of the building. I think there's a lot of questions about the site plan and the access plan. There is a very large curb cut now in place. However, it looks like they're gonna have to increase it the entire width of the property to make it work. So I think it's gonna exacerbate the issue, and it does a butt to residential edges. So I feel like we need a little bit more information on how this proposal's actually gonna fit in.
There won't, there won't be in, okay, sorry.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Um, any questions from the board? Any other questions?
Yep, so just, I know there's a couple of different car washes and now I'm gonna get too technical, but the automated one, is that, do the cars continuously move or is it one of these ones you pull in and the machine does all the work around you? And then when you're done, so only one car can be in at a time?
Yes, sir.
And there's only one of those and the other two?
No, there's gonna be three.
All three like that? Not like the one with like, okay, all three of them are gonna be like that?
Yes, sir.
Just, Mr. Jared, the other two bays are called self-wash bays per the plan, just so you know.
That's why I ask, because it does say self-wash bay, which is, which is different. That's, means the person's gonna get out of the car and use that-
Oh, no, they're all, they're all gonna be the same, they're all gonna be, it might just be a discrepancy with architect, but it's just gonna be all self-serve, I mean, not self-serve, they're all gonna be automated, standalone.
And will there be any vacuuming or drying or whatever?
The drying is gonna take, oh, sorry. The drying's gonna, the drying's gonna take place in the bays themselves. There may be one or two vacuum cleaners outside. But like we were saying, there's not gonna be any curb cutting. If they have the line placed, that's incorrect. We're gonna leave the curb as it sits, because there's ample space there. But we currently use it as a tow yard, so it's gonna be the same exact kind of design.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Seems like we have an opportunity for screening and buffering.
Yes, yeah. Tell us what's on the rear, on the rear of your property.
So right now, it's just open area. On the left, the left side of the building as it sits right now, it's actually a drive-through bay already. We use it all the time.
But I'm, but I'm still kind of interested on what's on the rear of the building? On the rear lot behind the building?
It's just parking, it's just parking.
On the other lot?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I don't know why this-
Okay, I'm looking at Google Maps, it looks like it's a residential area in the back.
It is a residential, it's a residential backyard behind.
Didn't understand the question. It is a residential building.
Oh, you're talking, okay, it's plenty of butters, yeah, there's a house, there's two houses behind us.
And are you proposing any screening, buffering, anything? Because you're gonna be-
Yes, so we plan on-
Pretty late, you're gonna be open pretty late until ten. Are you gonna, how are you proposing to protect them from getting car lights in their bedrooms or things like that?
So we plan on putting up a wall. Those hours aren't completely set yet, we want to make sure the neighborhood's okay with those hours. We're willing to work with those hours when it comes to the neighborhood, that's not an issue. But we plan on rebuilding a wall around the property to buffer the sound and the lights. It's not gonna, we're not gonna allow any loitering. It's just, you come wash your car and you leave after you, you're done washing your vehicle.
Madam Chair, just a quick question for the applicant. Why does the car wash have to be open till ten o'clock at night?
It doesn't have to, that's why I said we're open to adjusting the time.
Okay, so this is, let me just see, this is, I don't, it's called an extension of a non-conforming use. And a change, so it's a conditional use. So therefore, we can put a bunch of conditions on this should we decide to approve this. Okay, so is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, this is Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And a butters meeting was hosted by our office on October 21st. And during this meeting, many of butters, both residents and business owners, did have concerns regarding the impact on traffic, parking, noise. There were some environmental concerns in terms of the safety and impact of chemical waste, the hours of operation that are being proposed, and pedestrian safety. The applicants addressed the butters' concerns by stating that they will be having a attendant there to control the traffic, parking and loitering, and noise, as to be respectful to the neighborhood. They were instructed to contact the High Park Neighborhood Association regarding this proposal. There was some confusion whether the applicants directly spoke with the president of the association and whether there was a plan to present at the meeting. But the High Park Neighborhood Association has stated that they do have concerns for this project and believe that they are seeking too many variances, and again, echoing concerns for traffic. This project is close to Roslindale, so they tried to connect with the Claire Avenue Community Group, but there was no response due to the inactivity with that group at the moment. Our office has received two letters of opposition and twenty-two signatures in opposition for this project. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board, thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have those letters and we also have that signature page.
And Madam Chair, I do have a few raised hands, I'll start with Kay Allen. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Good morning, my name is Kim Allen. I live at 110 Claire Avenue, and I'm a butter. I am concerned about the size and the, of the project and the underground storage. I think this kind of business will add traffic, noise and air pollution on High Park Ave, which is already a busy thoroughfare. The hours are not conducive. I do appreciate the owner's willingness to be amenable to the neighborhood, but I just don't think this is the right project for this street, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, and Mondo, I've sent a request on you, can you state your full name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Caduca Mondo, 762 High Park Ave. I just want to share with you that we, more than twenty neighbors that never were contacted. We have never met with anyone, no one never told us that was going to be an establishment car wash. And we have never met with anyone. We are opposed, more than twenty neighbors, we wrote a letter, we signed, we are opposed to the car wash. We are next to the 750 High Park Ave. We are concerned about the health and the safety of all the pedestrians, the pets, the cyclists, the runners, the handicapped residents like myself. We are very concerned about the noise and the, and also, how are we going to get into our driveways?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, and then I do have additional raised hands, Jay Board, can you state your full name and address for the record, please?
Actually, it's Peter from Arrow Auto Body. For some reason, I was knocked off the Zoom meeting. So I, I'm actually on my coworker's computer right now. We are, we're in opposition of this altogether, we're very concerned.
So, I'm sorry, what's your address?
752 High Park Ave.
Okay.
And we're actually right next door to the establishment. I actually own the two-family next door to the body shop. And, you know, our concerns, I think it's a real bad idea on our end anyways.
Thank you, thank you.
Have no additional raised hands, thank you.
Anybody from the City Council's office? Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna make a motion to defer. It sounds like there hasn't been a process with the neighborhoods. Sounds like the owner may be amenable to making some accommodations and changes, but unless that conversation happens first, before it comes to us, I don't think we should act out. So I'm making a motion to defer.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Ehrlich, I think you're right. There's a lot of work as far as I'm concerned to be had about how to make this fit in.
So I guess, I guess my bottom-line question is, should it fit in? You know, you know, given the testimony about all the impacts. But, but sure, there's a motion on the table that's seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for a deferral, the date, please?
We're gonna push it out to May 24th at 11:30.
May 24th at 11:30 for everybody who is on this call.
Thank you. Madam Chair, it's now 10:37. I'm gonna call the 10:30 cases for any deferrals or withdrawals. If you can give me the address first, please? This is for 10:30 only, deferrals or withdrawals.
Mr. Fortune, 525 East Broadway.
Thank you, Mr. Lass, for the record, calling BOA-
Hold on, Mr. Fortune, before we call it on the record. Anybody here who's here for 10:30? This is a six-member board. And so for approval of your project, you need five members in support. You do have the option for requesting an administrative deferral. Okay, thank you, go ahead, Mr. LaCasse.
I'm sorry, Mr. LaCasse, the address was 525 East Broadway?
Yes.
For the record, calling BOA 1270-458, 525 East Broadway. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark LaCasse, LaCasse Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston. Attorney for the applicant, the St. George Albanian Orthodox Cathedral. Requesting a deferral to complete our process of reviewing stormwater management with our engineer and the butters regarding rainwater from the roof of the cathedral, which is adjacent to the parish house, which is the subject of this proposal.
Thank you, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the date, please?
You'll have a date of April 26th at 11:30.
Thank you so much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30? Hearing none, I'll go back to the 930s. Calling BOA 128-3031, 12 Everidge Street. This erected three-unit building. The violation is Article 55, Section 9, lot frontage is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name's Mark Sangiolo, I'm the architect for the project. With me online is the owner-developer Kate Earls and also the landscape architect- Um, with me online is the owner developer Kate Earls and also the landscape architect, Susan Sangiolo. We were before the board and were denied over a year ago for a six-unit building. We're here now proposing three units. Um, this drawing here, T-one, shows the building, uh, the footprint in relation to the uh, the site and the surrounding buildings. Although it is the classic pork chop lot with twenty-five feet of frontage on every street, we do have um eighty feet of frontage on the Gordon Street side, which is a public park. And we overlook, we're high above the T, so it's not like the site is constrained around it. If you go to T-two, T-two shows our design process, one through seven, where we started, uh, what we were.
Show us, please show us where you ended up.
Sure, uh, we ended up with number uh seven after an extensive community uh neighborhood review. The neighbors were uh completely involved in the design of this project. They decided where the building would be sited, um, how many units would be, it would be what the building type would be. We had wanted to do townhouses, they wanted to do flats. We had no problem with relinquishing control of the uh design to them, as long as there are.
So tell us then, okay, so your only violation is lot frontage because, okay? So tell us about how traffic and parking is supposed to work.
Sure. So uh, as you can see on this plan, L-one, this is the landscape plan. To the left uh is Everett Street. Uh, there has a driveway that uh goes down, it's a shared driveway between eight Everett on the left, which is a project we did uh, uh, two years ago, it's a three, three-unit building. And then as we go, uh, you can see our building that is entered um from below. Uh, there's also a walk along the right, uh, the bottom property line that goes along the lot line and into the um, into the building. If you go to um, um, A-one, I think it'll show how the parking works a little better. It's down, yep, back up, back up. Back more, it's right there, yep, this A-one, colored drawing. So you can see the driveway and how the parking works on the site. The parking is lower than, the driveway goes down lower and the uh, the entry is on a split level, a half level above. Um, we did try to minimize the, the garage, garages, there's only three, three parking spaces. We did try to minimize the garages by pushing the one garage back to reduce the massing. So if you go down now to the next um drawing, this is the uh, the image of what the, the building looks like. You can see the parking, the garage, the parking court, the garages, the entry on the half level, and the kind of picturesque character that the neighbors uh wanted to see in the building.
So um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are good, um, I think it's a, a comprehensive proposal for, for.
Any questions, any questions, any questions from the board? So you're a Butter at um, what is it, fourteen? Has their car park tilted right towards your uh, your, your walkway? Um, so that's gonna be interesting to be able to keep that clean, but that's just an observation because I was driving by the other day and noticed the site clearing and the, and the, the car park. Um, is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Tiffany Cabay, Cabayido here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, and a Butters meeting was facilitated by my office back on September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one. Um, I possessed twenty-eight letters from Director Butters in non-opposition of this project. Additionally, the JPNC zoning subcommittee voiced support of this proposal as well on February second, twenty-twenty-two. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the board's judgment, thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, I do have a signature page of twenty-eight in support.
Thank you. I do have one raised hand, Belinda, I sent a request to unmute you, can you state your name and address for the record, please? Hi, Belinda. She might be having some issues uh with the audio. Other than I have no additional raised hands.
It's David, um, okay, David Con- Carnican? Is he here for this project, Ambassador?
Hi, David, sorry, he's on the panelist section, are you here to give testimony for this proposal?
Yes, my name is David Carnahan, I live at six Everett Street in Jamaica Plain, I'm a direct-to-Butter to the project. I'd like the board to be aware of the memorandum of understanding that was reached between the developers and twenty-eight Butters. Uh, it covers items that are not necessarily on the building plan or the landscape plan, but that the developers have agreed to adhere to it going forward. I'd appreciate if the board could recognize the memo of understanding as part of uh, of, of, of the approval process, if indeed you do approve this project this morning. And the twenty-eight uh names on the memo of under, uh, memo of understanding do support uh, you know, the granting of.
Um, so the board generally does not um, um, recognize or include in their decisions any memorandum of understanding since we are not privy to those, um, we, we are not privy to those or part of the decision-making process. So I'll just uh put that out there. Um, any other, anybody else, Miss Ambassador?
No, ma'am, I tried to go back to Belinda, uh, it looks like there's still issues getting her on, so I have no additional raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BTD and design review.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you very much, have a nice.
Calling the last case for uh, for nine-thirty, calling DOA one-two-five-zero-two-nine-eight-nine, zero-two-eight-nine. So, one-sixteen to one-twenty-six Harvard Avenue. This is a change of occupancy from existing retail space into a cannabis dispensary with recreational use. Violation Article fifty-one, section sixteen, locate.
Uh, Mr. Fortune, you went dark on us.
Sorry, I got muted. What did you hear? I guess I could start over. On the last case, the nine-thirty, calling DOA one-two-five-zero-two-eight-nine, one-sixteen to one-twenty-six Harvard Avenue. This is a change of, change of occupancy from an existing retail space into a cannabis dispensary with recreational use. Violation Article fifty-one, section sixteen, the use and regulations, the location, the forbidden buffer zone conflict proposed within two thousand six hundred and forty feet of another cannabis establishment. Article fifty-one, section sixteen, the use and regulations, cannabis established recreational use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Eric Lawrence, twenty-six Woodbine Street, Roxbury, Mass, business owner.
So uh, talk to us about what you're proposing. Um, you may have been on some of our other calls, so please tell us about um, how your, your um operation is proposed to work? Any parking that you're proposing? Um, and how far away you are from another establishment? Tell us why um the community needs to, within the half-mile.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, and thank you for this opportunity to present our proposal this morning to you for an adult-use dispensary located at one-sixteen Harvard Ave. Um, yes, to answer your question specifically, uh, we will operate um out of two thousand square-foot street-level retail space on Harvard Avenue. Um, it is a business district, uh, commercially zoned.
It's a CC district, community commercial?
Um, it is a commercial district, yes. Um, there are no direct residential Butters to us. Um, we are an economic empowerment and social equity applicant. We're independent, local, and a minority-owned business. And we plan to make a positive impact to the community through several initiatives, which we will discuss uh with you. Um, so, yes, um, the uh buffer zone issue on the map you have up, it designates and shows that um, where our location is versus the uh, the uh location that we are within their buffer zone, Mayflower Medicinals further down Harvard Avenue. Um, as indicated in the circles, the CVSs that are, that are indicated there almost designate that way. Um, basically, we serve two different markets within the neighborhood.
So, I, I'm, I'm interested in very specifically, yes, about, I'm, I'm not interested in CVS, but about the Mayflower medicine, medicinals, uh, between the two, you know, between the two.
Right, yes. So we, we are point-three miles away from um, Mayflower Medicinals. Uh, we've started this process, Mayflower Medicinals was a medical-only um operator, and they currently are only serving medical patients only. Um, with that, with the fact that we have a natural buffer in Cal Ave and the Green Line, um, that's uh, between us, uh, the fact that we're commercially zoned, the fact that uh, the density within Alton is fifty percent higher than the citywide average density is. We feel that we can, um, the, the Alston area, especially on corridor, can support two dispensaries within the location. Mayflower, Mayflower's Medicinals is right on the border of Brookline and Alston. Uh, and so we feel that we will serve a different, a different customer, uh, specifically being recreational as well as the distance between us, the natural buffer, um, and.
So, so please tell us about your facility, your hours of operation, uh, how much of it will be, just pick up, um, how you'll deal with queuing?
Right, so um, our facility, our location, um, is again, is two thousand square-feet uh retail space level. One of the things that we're gonna do with the location is we're going to add a separate entrance to the right of the building to help with customer flow. Once you enter into the building, you'll go through the required security checks, one on the outside, one on the inside with through the state's uh scanner, and then one at the point of sale. Immediately entering the facility, we have designated uh about five thousand square feet of space. If you look at the diagram to the right, it's kind of like a horseshoe. Uh, one of our impacts that we're making with the community is to use this space as indoor queuing, and it will double also as a indoor gallery, rotating gallery where we allow Alston residents to exhibit and monitor their artwork, um, Artisan Alston, uh, we've done.
Um, so, so please tell us then, um, about deliveries, how and when will deliveries occur?
Yes, um, deliveries um and cash transfers will occur to the rear of the building. Uh, we have a uh separate um loading area to the rear of the building. Um, those, those deliveries will be discreet and unmarked vehicles, and they will be randomized in the delivery. And we will, um, you know, we will have uh onsite security, um, as well as uh cameras that route the facility in the interior and the exterior to, to help security with our site and with the area as in the general um business areas.
Okay, um, and will you be proposing to use the basement at all, or is it all on this level?
Um, the basement will be used as a uh break room uh for associates who have two bathrooms in there, and on one side of the basement will use for office space.
Okay, so your vault will be on this level then?
Vault will be on the uh three level, yes.
Okay, um, and what are your proposed hours of operation?
Um, seven days a week, ten AM to nine PM.
How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are pretty straightforward, um, no real questions, looks like minimal exterior updates uh as shown in the proposal.
Um, Mr. Lawrence, did you uh tell us about how much of your, since you anticipate happening as uh, just pickups? Or online?
Um, so online, um, order, we will have pre-ordering and online for express pickup. We anticipate maybe between thirty and forty percent of that um would be online, which will uh help with the customer flow, eliminate uh lines on the exterior of the building, and um just kind of expedite, expedite the process of getting customers in and out. Um, we are working also with the City of Austin Parking Department. We'd like to institute a fifteen-minute parking um area, zone within um the, the, the business district. We feel that it will help not only with our business, but the many restaurants that um utilize Grubhub and Uber Eats uh that come in and out of uh facility, only need about fifteen minutes of which to do so. Our best transaction, we estimate, will be about, no more than ten minutes for a customer to come in, purchase their product, and, and leave the building.
And so, a, a general, a general cannabis establishment such as yours is also allowed to um sell medical marijuana, i- is, am I right about that?
Um, only if you're a vertically-integrated operator, and which we are not.
Wait, what does that mean?
Uh, meaning that we would grow our own product. You have to grow your own product in order to be a medicinal uh operator. So we would not compete with uh Mayflower Medicinals.
Okay. Um, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would defer judgment to the board. Some background information on the community process, uh, the applicant has met and presented to both the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association and the Alston Civic Association. Uh, during those presentations, a number of members expressed um support of the location, feeling it was appropriate being in a business district that's zoned for community commercial. Um, there should be a letter that also came in from the Alston Civic Association regarding concerns about uh the buffer zone conflict with just a number of marijuana establishments already approved in the Alston Civic, in the Alston area, excuse me. Um, the Mayor's Office had a public meeting on December twenty-ninth in twenty-twenty-one. Um, overwhelmingly, the residents that attended and the business owners that attended were in support. They liked that the applicant had done a good job reaching out to them and liked the commitments to equity and supporting local artists. Uh, I believe the Alston Village Main Streets organization has also submitted a letter of support, as they have also submitted a letter of support to another uh rival cannabis dispensary in the area as well, thank you.
Okay, um, I would like anybody to, who is anticipating giving testimony, I'd like to have Alston Brighton residents, not residents from uh other parts of the city or other cities, okay?
Madam Chair, Secretary here.
Alston Brighton residents only, thank you, go ahead.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, sorry, just reiterating with the, the Mayor's Office, that we do have those letters of support.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, and Madam Chair, I do have a few raised hands, um, I'll start with Joshua Sullivan.
Hello?
Hi, go ahead, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, this isn't Joshua Sullivan, I don't know if that, were you supposed to call?
Oh, we can go ahead, go on, no.
Oh, yeah, uh, my name is Alexander Shames, um, I live at forty-nine Cushman Road in Brighton. Um, I want to speak in strong support of um Mass Greenwoods, one-sixteen Harvard Ave. Um, uh, they have been really, really connected to the neighborhood, they showed up at um a rally last week, the.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, then um, go to Nick next, Nick Rico, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Um, hi, my name is Nick Rico, I'm a, a Alston resident at sixty-four Ridgemont Street, apartment number one. I'm a founding member of uh Artist Impact, and um I would like to um just say that um I am in strong support of this establishment. I think that their uh programs for uh social equity and uh housing assistance for their staff um and uh artist resources um is unrivaled in, in the neighborhood, and.
Thank you, thank you, Nick.
Yeah.
All right, and Joshua, go ahead.
Hello, yes, my name is Joshua Sullivan, I'm from one-sixty Cambridge Street. I've lived in Alston all my life, um, maybe five generations, and um I'm also disabled. Um, and that would be real nice and uh, and awesome that um, there would be a nice dispensary, local, um, close to my home where I could just ride my wheelchair in, um, and.
Thank you.
All right, and then I'll go to Dawn Packett. Sent a request to unmute you, can you state your name and address for the record, please? Hi, Dawn.
Hi. Hi, my name is Dawn Packnett, I live in Brighton, Fort Worth, Road, um, number forty-three, and um I am in strong support of this application and this team. I think it'll be a great addition to the Alston Brighton neighborhood.
Thank you.
All right, Tony, does it, um, been sent a request to unmute you? All right, Tony Disidoro, um, been sent a request to unmute you. Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tony Disidoro, representing the Alston Civic Association. Uh, Madam Chair, we've issued a statement of, uh, non-opposition, uh, uh, not so much directed at the proponents, uh, but we wanted to bring to your attention the, the item that you brought up earlier. We actually have four dispensaries, uh, in various stages of the, uh, review approval process. Uh, two fifty-nine Cambridge Street, one sixteen Harvard Ave, one forty-four Harvard Ave, and two thirty Harvard Ave. All four of them are within a mile of each other. Three of the four on Harvard Ave, of course, are within the half-mile, uh, buffer. So we just wanted to, uh, through the statement of non-opposition, defer in judgment to the board, we just wanted to bring to the attention of the board what is in the pipeline and what, uh, conceivably could come to the zoning board of appeals in the future.
Tony, let me ask you, how many of those are equity applicants?
Gee, I'm not sure, Madam Chair. Uh, the, the, the two fifty, the two fifty-nine Cambridge, as you know, was approved both by the Cannabis Board and by the ZBA. Um, one sixteen, of course, is here today. One forty-four was in front of the Cannabis Board, and they decided to defer because there was, uh, some questions about the community review process, and they needed to schedule another community meeting. And then, as you know, one, uh, two thirty Harvard Ave is a medical. It's the only one we have, an operating medical dispensary. They have also been approved by the Cannabis Board and the ZBA for recreational, uh, license as well. So, um, again, we just wanted to bring to, to your attention the fact that there's really four proposals that we know of that are actively in pursuit of getting a license granted to them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. And, um, Kimberly Hutter, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, yes, this is Kimberly Hutter. I'm from Senator Brown's Burger's office. I wanted to come today to offer the standard, uh, the Senator's standard response of non-opposition to this proposal, um, and defer to the judgment of the board, but also state that the Senator, um, does have a blanket policy of supporting applications for cannabis business, um, in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and Narbusito, sent a request to unmute you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Nervic De Jesus. Uh, I live at one oh one Entra Street in Brighton, uh, and I just want to speak in support of the opening of the dispensary, uh, and also the, the gallery that'll be a part of it. I think it's gonna be really good for the community in terms of bringing art from the residents out into the streets, so to speak. Um, Alston is a very art-rich environment to be in. I'm a local artist myself, and it's always nice to see, you know, initiative from business owners to kind of bring art more into the community and help all-
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And Madam, if we keep going, there's still a couple more hands about-
Yeah, let's, let's get, uh, let's get four more and that's it.
Okay, yep, Stephen Donahue, go ahead.
Hi, this is Pastor Steve Donahue, fifty-one Walnut Street. I wanted to let you know I am in complete opposition to this proposal.
I'm sorry, Walnut Street, where?
Fifty-one Walnut Street.
Where?
In Napontet. It's right behind the dispensary.
Okay, uh, so this is in Alston?
Oh, I'm sorry. I got this listed, dispensary.
No, no, this is in Alston.
Okay, um, Young Juice, one second. Okay, yep. Can you state your full name and address for the record, please?
Hi, Justin Diaz from one sixty-three Strathmore Road, Brighton, and I am in strong support of this dispensary opening, along with the gallery, which I think will enhance the commu- community of artists in the area. And, yeah, I support this.
Thank you.
Okay, and the last one, Hillary.
Thank you. My name is Hillary Markot. Uh, I'm a resident of Alston at two three five Harvard Avenue. I live a five-minute walk from the proposed location. Um, I want to express strong support for Mass Greenwood's. Um, I, I would love to be able to support a local minority-owned business in my neighborhood. Um, I support them setting up expungement clinics and creating a space for local artists. It's walkable, it's right off the Beeline and major bus routes.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so, um, um, we have, um, you know, the perennial issue, or maybe it's the weekly issue, um, to, to, um, operators within proximity of each other. And, um, Tony is right. We did, um, approve two thirty as a switch from purely medical when they started off to a general. Um, and so, um, given that this is an equity, um, applicant, I don't know if that changes the, the, the decision because, um, you know, this is, um, an intense number of, uh, applications for such a small area. So given that information that we put and the high level of support, may I have a motion, please?
Before we do, entertain a motion, can I just ask a question? If we're dealing with this buffer zone issue and making exceptions, uh, presumably the Cannabis Board has weighed in on this. Um, do we know what their rationale was in favor?
Yes, we, and, and that's what we would like to have, um, submitted to us as part of the package, just like the BPDA provides their, um, their advisory opinions to this board. We would like to hear from the, uh, Cannabis Commission likewise.
Hello, that's Tom. I believe the Cannabis Commission submitted its letter into the board's file on this one.
So, Mr. Fortune, can you just summarize what-
It's just a germane letter, but I can read it out if you, I can try to figure it out.
No, just, just, just the, the core is, the core, the core thing in there about the half mile.
It should be a matter of public record as opposed to just in our file.
Okay, so, Mr. Fortune, could-
Yeah, it's pretty extensive, Madam Chair.
Okay, so the bottom line is they're in support of this?
That's correct.
Okay, so the, the issue that's before us is that, you know, you know, we need to figure out, and since this, this is a forbidden use, is this a use that would benefit-
Is this a forbidden use or a conditional use?
In this location, it is a forbidden use for some strange reason, because I thought in all commercial districts, they were, um, they were conditional uses.
They are, except if you're within the buffer zone, then it's forbidden.
Oh, that's, that is true, because the, the main use is conditional, that's right. Um, so, so this is a conditional use, forbidden because it's within the, um, within the half a mile. So, um, so given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I, I, I'll make a motion to approve, um, BPDA design review, um, and similar, uh, the, the windows, trying to keep them o- open and transparent as possible. I know there's the regulations they have to follow, but design review for that and signage.
And this applicant only?
And, yep, and this applicant only.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair, Secretary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna stop at ten-thirties. Do you want to take a couple of minutes break? Or do we want to go with-
Yes, it's, it's now eleven oh eight. Let's take a break until eleven fifteen, okay? Thank you. The meeting is adjourned until then. Thank you.
Meeting is being recorded.
Let us resume the meeting for March 22nd for the zoning Board of Appeal. Just before we kick off, let me remind everybody that this is a six-member board and that you need five approvals. Five positive votes for your project to be approved. You are thus, you know, you thus have the option to request an administrative deferral. Sorry about all that stumbling, but go ahead, Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I already called it once, but I'll call it again for any of the 10:30 cases. If there are any deferrals or withdrawals, you give me the address first, please. Hearing none, Madam Chair. I'll call the first case at 10:30, calling DOA 1252505, 166 to 168 Salem Street. This is a change of occupancy from an eight-unit residential one-store to a nine-unit residential dwelling and extend living space into the basement and construct new rear decks. For violations, Article 54, Section 10, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 54, Section 21, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Greg McCarthy from 166 Salem.
Could please tell us what's being proposed?
Sure. So we have a existing five-story, nine-unit building, which we are proposing to change from eight units and a club. The ground floor was a club that hasn't been used in some time. So we're proposing to change it from eight units and a club to nine residential. We're also, that's where our violation comes from for off-street parking. We don't have a parking spot to provide for the additional residential unit.
So first, tell us, has this address been before this board before for the residential use?
No.
Okay. So tell us about that first-floor unit. And tell us what the proposed square footage is. And just so that you know, this board is not overly thrilled about residential use in the basement. So talk us through that, please.
Sure. Yeah, so we have, the way the building was stacked previously is two units per floor. So we extended the living space at the basement, we made two duplexes. Originally, we were going to have the bedrooms down here in the basement. But, you know, there wasn't, it wasn't the best space for them. So we ended up just doing all living space down there. There's, you know, pretty decent ceiling height. We have a good amount of windows down there.
So tell us very specifically, what is the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement? What is the...
So we'll have...
Now, hold on, hold on. What is the proposed square feet for each of those, each of those two units? And what is their second means of egress? And finally, are the meters accessible independently from the units?
Yes, they are. So the, the, the units are about 900 square feet, these duplexes here. There are, the building's fully sprinkled. So for these first-floor units, we didn't have the same problem as we had for the, for the fifth-floor unit. We needed a second means of egress, which is why we have a staircase coming all the way back down. For these, we do have window wells in them, but those are just kind of additional egresses for them. And then all the other...
Tell us about the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
Sure. So the floor-to-ceiling height will be eight feet, where it's completely, seven, seven foot 11.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine. Is there, is there a plot plan or a survey? I just don't know what the rear yard encroachment of the additional decks is. And just for the board, the, the living space appears to be in the basement is wholly below grade. I think there's some, looks to be some small windows and some area wells in the back. But there is no bedroom called out. It's called out as an office in the basement.
So it's... So, sorry, Mr. Robinson, it's entirely below grade?
Yes. As you can see in this plan, this elevation on the current screen, the right-hand side shows the dashing of the new basement level, which is minus nine foot four, it says, which I assume the reason it's a eight-foot ceiling is because it's, there's structure there, of course. So there are small windows on the left-hand side, as you can see in the front below, that appear to be the only actual windows into the basement besides the rear area wells.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Sarah Tamico with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. They had completed their community process. However, Abutters' voice concerns about the rear decks because they believe it brings more noise and disturbance to the neighborhood. Although, there were two letters of support from North End Waterfront Residence Association and the North End Waterfront Neighborhood Council. Our office would like to defer to the board's judgment at this time. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Michael Benetti from the office, sorry, from the Office of Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would like to ask for a deferral for continued conversations with neighbors and abutters, specifically regarding the rear decks.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have one support letter.
And Madam Chair, do you have one raised hand? Bob? I sent a request to unmute you. You're looking to give testimony for this case? If not, I have no additional raised hands. I'm not sure. Hi, Bob, can you hear it?
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
I would, I would entertain a motion or make a motion to defer as well. Without having the, a plot plan, I just don't understand how close the decks are to the rear. It's fairly tight in the rear.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I would also encourage the applicant to think about whether it's really worth going into the basement for those duplexes and think about what it would look like to actually have that as livable space. Okay, and the next case, please?
We have a date of April 26th at 11:30.
Okay, see you then.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 1285023, 148 Worcester Street. This is install a new roof deck. Violation Article 56, Section 64.34. Access via headhouse, Article 56, Section 64-34. Restricted roof district percentage of the roof coverings exceeded excessive height. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, is David on? Can you raise your hand? Whoever's representing, David McGrath? I'm sorry, I just, one raised, is it Marco? Marco, are you here representing the 148 Worcester?
My lawyer, actually, Adam Barnowski, should be online. Thinking the case, I mean, if it's not there, I can't present it.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
Here is, okay.
Oh, hi. Sorry about that. Hey, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Adam Barnowski. 255 State Street, Boston. With me is Marco Petrillo, the property owner, and the architect Eduardo Serrate might be joining us, although he did have a conflict around 11 o'clock. The property is located within the South End Neighborhood District, the MFR, a zoning sub-district. This is an application for installation of a roof deck. The property is located southeast of Columbus Avenue amidst a row of townhouses, both adjacent to and across the street from the subject property. Unit 5 is located on the fifth floor with exclusive roof rights. As the plans show, the access to the roof deck as proposed is through an existing headhouse at the rear of the property, accessed through a rear stairway. This is not a common roof, with the deck being exclusive to unit 5. The design is consistent with other townhomes on Worcester Street.
Let me ask you, can I ask, is this visible from the street?
No.
No, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. No questions.
Any questions from the board?
Just what is the size of the existing headhouse?
I'm sorry, was a question?
What is the size of the existing headhouse?
The, the width is seven foot, two inches. It's on, you can see, you can see it on, on A2 of the construction plans.
So can you just verbally put it on the record?
Yes, seven feet, two inches.
By what? Is it seven foot, two inches square?
You know, I'm looking at the plan here. Is Eduardo on the line? At this point, he might be able to answer that quickly.
Okay, I, I, all I really wanted to know is whether this is basically a headhouse that would just for the access of stairs, or whether it's one of those expanded headhouses. But it looks to be a, on the small...
It's a fairly small headhouse, Mr. Ehrlich. I think it's, it's not dimensioned in plan. It's one-dimensional, but it looks like about seven by seven-ish.
Okay.
But it, and it's, it's at the back, so the roof slopes down fairly minimal.
Yep, got it.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kim Crucili with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office held an Abutters' meeting in February of 2022, where support was shown by the Abutters. They also received a letter of support from the Clermont Neighborhood Association. At this time, our office would like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary, we have the letter from the Clermont.
And Madam Chair, do you have one raised hand? Kalamu, will you be going to give testimony here? I sent a request to unmute you. Now, show if there's issues on your side. Okay, there you go. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, I'm Kalamu Peta from District 7, City Council, Tanya Anderson's office. We just want to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you. Right, and I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 123977850, Clap Street. Yeah, can NSADO hold?
Ma'am, I'll be recusing myself from this case. This is Eric.
Okay.
Madam Chair, this is the attorney. I know the secretary was about to introduce the case. I like our case, however, going to five members, Madam Chair?
Okay, hold on, hold on. Let's have it read into the record. Just at least the number and the address, and then we'll take it there.
Thank you.
I've already done that, but I'll do it again. Call in case, DOA 123977850, Clap Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Mike Ross from Prince Lavelin International Place. Yeah, Madam Chair, like I said, we like our case, but...
Okay, hold on. Let me have a motion for deferral.
What motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This is because there's a five-member board, and so this is an administrative deferral. May we have a date, please?
We can do April 26th.
April 26th works, Mr. Secretary.
Hold on, Mr. Ross. I'm being told that there's going to be another member that's not going to be there as well. We can do May 24th at 11:30.
Did you hear that, Mr. Ross?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, let's do that, please.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you.
May 24th at 11:30.
Okay, see you then.
Thank you. Calling the next case. Calling DOA 1270494, 460 East 7th Street. This is build a roof deck, building extending existing spiral staircase to access new roof deck in the rear of the building. The violation is Article 68, Section 29. Roof structure restriction, access via spiral stair. Name and address for the record, please.
Hold on, one second, they are on. Cherry, are you here to speak on behalf of this project? I just sent a request to unmute you.
Yes, I am. Sorry, I think I was muted.
No worries. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Gerald Adler. I'm the owner at 460 East 7th Streets. Address is 28 Monument Street, Drawstown.
Mr. Adler, could you make sure we can see you? We strongly encourage that. So please, please go ahead and describe your project.
How do I put the, how do I activate the camera?
There should be a tab that says "Start Video" on the bottom left-hand side.
Afraid I've not seen that, ma'am.
Okay, just go ahead then.
I apologize for that. In any event, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to present today and share our proposal for 460 East 7th Street. We are requesting to add a private deck for the third-floor unit to be located on the roof. At the moment, all the tenants continue to work from home and lack dedicated outdoor space. And knowing the challenges of that situation, we're looking to improve the living condition and add a deck, which is detailed on, I believe, the next page of the plans that you are scrolling through at the moment.
So this would not, this would be open to all residents, then, not just to that top unit?
Not quite, ma'am. The intent would be that this deck would be for the exclusive use of the third-floor residents.
Okay, third floor, okay. Okay, and how is it accessed to the spiral stairs, right?
Exactly right. There is an existing spiral staircase in the rear. This is the second mode of egress for the third floor. And the proposal is to simply extend that existing spiral staircase up to the roof level, so that that becomes the mode of access to the deck.
Let's see. And is there a possibility to access that roof deck via a hatch?
There actually is a hatch, yes. We did not think that that was... That is certainly an option that we could, we could explore. We thought that it would likely be easier to access it via the existing spiral stair by simply extending it. But there is a hatch, and that putting a, putting access through that hatch is definitely something that could be done. Absolutely.
Okay. When was this building constructed?
It is quite old. I don't have the exact...
Okay, it's not in the recent...
Roughly 1900.
Okay.
No, no, it's roughly 1900.
Okay, is, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are pretty straightforward. It, the, it looks like the existing spiral is there, up to three, and then they're just proposing to extend it up and then build it. It is held back from all sides. Shouldn't be visible for any, any of the streets. No questions.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. At the Abutters' meeting, we did hear a lot of opposition from longstanding owners and generational selfie residents. And we did hear a few support from a couple renters down the street. And any of the support or opposition letters were sent to the zoning board, but we would like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Haley, did I understand that we are, I'm not going to see you much more at this Board of Appeal in this capacity?
Yes, unfortunately, bummer.
I'm sorry about that, because you just have a great history with the community and put things in context. So good luck.
Oh, thank you. You're the best.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have one letter in opposition.
And Madam Chair, do you have two raised hands? I'll start with Paul. Paul, I sent a request to unmute you.
Hi, Madam Chair, I would like to say...
All right, go ahead.
No problem. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President's Plinks Office. The council would like to make a statement in opposition based on feedback from the Abutters' neighbors in the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association, who all express significant concerns of absentee landlords and noise disruption, loud parties at all hours, trash removal, and other quality of life issues. These concerns have been significant quality of life issues in the South Boston community for years and have unfortunately exacerbated to a much higher degree over the last couple of years during the pandemic. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, the City Council at Lodge Michael Flaherty. Council like to go on record in opposition. He'd also like to suggest that the board put moratorium on roof deck approvals to the community, working with the appropriate city department, C6, NISD, get the existing roof deck parties and safety issues under control. Council would like to note that there were several incidents in the neighborhood this past weekend and an instance where one person actually fell off a roof deck. Thank you.
Thank you. Haley, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? Hi, Kay. Okay. All right. Well, Paul McDonough, go ahead. Are you upset?
Ah, yes. Can you hear me?
Go ahead. Yes.
Ah, yes. My name is Paul McDonough. I live at 456 East 7th Street. I'm in opposition to this roof deck.
Hi, can you hear me?
Oh, one second. Go ahead, go ahead, Paul.
Yes. Ah, yes. There's already two large decks on the back of that house, and there's nothing but parties and noise out there all the time. One of the decks has an illegal grill on there that's covered by a roof. But there's been nothing but trouble with this landlord since he's been here. He's been taken advantage of. He doesn't, the only house on the block that doesn't shovel the sidewalks and anything else. Just nothing but farms in. We don't need him, need him to go.
Thank you.
All right, Haley, go ahead. Hi, Haley. Sullivan? You looking to give testimony here? Okay, um, would you, would you be?
Hi, I would like to voice my opposition. I grew up on this street, and it used to be a community, and it has been destroyed by absentee landlords and nonstop partying, which...
Hold on, hold on, Ms. McDonough. Can you put your name and address on the record, please?
My name's Bridie McDonough. I live at 456 East 7th Street, two doors up.
So we just heard from somebody in your household, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. May, is there other raised hands?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for denial.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Adler, it sounds like there's a little bit of work you need to do to be a good neighbor. So please see what you can do with, with your Abutters, okay? Thank you.
Madam Chair, it's now 11:39. I'm going to call the 11:30 cases. There are any deferrals and withdrawals, and then I'll also do the subcommittee. So if anybody has a case for 11:30 that is deferring or withdrawing, if you can give me the address, I appreciate it. Thank you.
221 East Deagle Street. Mr. Secretary, it's Attorney Linz.
Thank you, Mr. Linz. For the record... Address again?
221 East Deagle.
Thank you. Case DOA 1256992, 221... Thank you. Uh, case BOA 1256992, 221 East Eagle Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, good morning, Mr., uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Linz, 245 Summer Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, uh, Madam Chair, I believe, uh, you only have a six-member board. There'll be one recusal. And therefore, we would only have a five-member court for the hearing, and therefore requesting administrative deferral.
And, uh, who was the recusal? Is that you, Joe? Okay, got it. Uh, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a?
I'll second, here.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Date, please.
You'll have a date of April 26th at 11:30.
Thank you. Actually, Mr. Secretary, possible to get a further date out? I'm actually away that day.
Yep, we can give you in May. Uh, hold on two seconds. Yeah, let's do May 24th at 11:30.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30?
Yes, request for deferral. Elizabeth Fernandez, 73 Stanwood.
Ad- address, please, first.
73 Stanwood Street.
For the record, calling BOA 1224197, 73 Stanwood Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Elizabeth Fernandez, 73 Stanwood Street.
And is there a reason that you're requesting another deferral?
Uh, to give the plan examiner adequate amount of notification to review the modifications to the plan.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
We'll have a date of April 26th at 11:30.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30? Hearing none. I'm going to call the subcommittee, which met on Thursday, March 17th, 2022, at 10:10 Mass Ave, Fifth Floor. On the first case, case BOA 1241879615 East 3rd Street, was an existing two-family new egress stairs in the rear of the building. It was approved. Case BOA 12894544 Cherokee Street was deferred to the subcommittee for 4:14, 2022, at 5:00 P.M. Case BOA 127769641 Cornwall Street, construct a new roof dorm and extend living space to the attic. Existing two-family, it was approved. Case BOA 12814996 Port Norfolk Street. Was a gut and tear of a home, reinforced structure, raised the second floor to meet code. It was approved with BPDA for dormer and roof height. Case BOA 127721343 Pear Street was deferred to the subcommittee on 5/19/2022, at 5:00 P.M. Case BOA 129044320 Orchard Street was to build a new, build a dormer to create a new master bathroom. It was approved with BPDA for dormer. Case BOA 127738011 Danville Street was a construction one-story addition to the rear of an existing single-family detached dwelling. It was approved. Case BOA 128008315 Gertrude Road was a renovation and addition of Unit 2 in existing two-family condo. It was approved. Case BOA 12836961230 Soldiers Field Road to build a fitness center. It was approved. And on the rediscussion, it was case BOA 119462033 Bartlett Street was a renovation of an existing third-floor attic. Renovated space will consist of a master bedroom along with the bath and guest room. It was approved with BPDA and attention to the raising of the roof. That concludes the subcommittee's report for March 17th, 2022.
Give us March 7th. So may I have a motion, please?
Motioner accept the recommendation of the subcommittee.
Is there a second?
I'll second, here.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case for the 10:30s, calling BOA 1296104135 William T. Morrissey Boulevard. This is a change of occupancy included accessory keeping of laboratory animals. The violation is Article 65, Section 15, the accessory keeping of laboratory animals is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Is the applicant here?
Don't see it. Oh, there, there is a raised hand that just came up. Was it Matthew Fitzgerald? Okay, go ahead. Matthew, I sent a request to unmute you. Go ahead.
Hi, Paul. Madam Chair, members of the board, Matt Fitzgerald, Sullivan, Worcester. Um, one post office square in Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, BCP B Property LLC. Um, we are here today quite simply seeking approval to include, one, accessory use, the accessory keeping of laboratory animals uh, to the list of approved uses at the site. This is the former Boston Globe headquarters site at 135 Morrissey Boulevard. Brief, very briefly, by way of background, in, uh, July of 2018, um, the, uh, the petitioner's predecessor and interest appeared before this board seeking approval to change the use and occupancy from primarily newspaper publishing use, uh, to, uh, a list of, of several new uses, um, particularly research and development and laboratory use. Um, what they did not do at that time, however, was also request the accessory keeping of laboratory animals use, um, or otherwise known as vivarium use, uh, which, which is a, a critical and for many lab tenants, an absolutely necessary use, uh, incidental to the lab and research and development use.
So hold on, hold on, Mr. Fitzgerald. It's good to see that you've landed, you've landed, um, in the private sector.
It's good to see you as well, Madam Chair.
Okay, so let's just get it clear. So you're looking for accessory use for the entire building, which is less than 25%? Or is it for very, something very specific?
So the, the entire building was approved without restrictions. The entire building was, was approved for research and development and laboratory use.
Yes, remember, yeah.
So this, this accessory use will be, uh, incidental to not necessarily all of the tenants, but to the tenants who do, um, animal testing. So, um, you know, being as there is no restriction as to the, the research and development use, this use is going to be accessory to, um, you know, wherever the research and development use that conducts animal testing.
Okay, so just, just out of curiosity, how is the development and the rental of the space going?
Um, the, I believe construction has been completed. Um, I, there, I have some, some, um, members of the petitioner's team on the call, at least Alan Coder or Matthew Stiegel. If, if we can elevate them to panelists, they might be able to, uh, elaborate as to the tenant, um, you know, the, the tenant marketing and so forth. Um, so, so Jessica, if that, if that's possible.
Name of this, of course. Ma- you said Matt Stiegel, and who else?
Stiegel or Al- in Alan Coder, yes.
I think there are.
Okay. You see, I have his hand raised.
Okay, go ahead. From Matt Stiegel and Alan. And then, uh, Matt, you can unmute yourself, panelists. Coder. All right, they're all set.
Okay, please, if somebody could just give us an update.
Yes, so well, this is Matt Stiegel. Can you hear me?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, redevelopment of the property to a creative office has been completed. We're in process of converting, uh, the property for R and D use. Uh, we are in discussions with, um, you know, one potential tenant working to finalize a lease for roughly 40% of the building, uh, for those R and D uses. And we have signed one existing lease, um, which is not a laboratory use with noble apparel, docked by 100,000 square feet.
So 100,000 plus 40% R and D, because we're seeing a lot of R and D, so that's why we were, uh, just curious to know how, how it was leasing up. But that's good to know. Okay, thank you. Um, eh, how are the plans, um, Mr. Rob?
Plans are fine. Uh, no questions, um, in terms of the proposal.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Uh, yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Quinn with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. The proposal received near unanimous support from the Columbia Seven Hill Civic Association. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGaughan, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office, would like to go on record in support.
And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Going to call the next four cases. Calling BOA 12958646R, Ria- Erickson Street. There are three companion cases, BOA 12957718R, Ria- Erickson Street. Case BOA 129586718R, Ria- Erickson Street. And BOA 129587020R, Erickson Street.
So before.
Madam Chair, I, this is Eric. I'll be refusing myself from this case.
I was, I was just going to ask that. Who is the applicant for this case? Is there a representative online?
Yes, Jared Igerman for Ruben, Junius, and Rose. I'm here with Quinlan Locke from the developer, Rise Together, and Kevin Diebler, the architect.
Okay, so let me just tell you that with the recusal, we have a five-member board. You will need every one of us to be in support of this proposal. You may thus request an administrative, uh, deferral, uh, if you so desires. It's your decision, so please let us know what your intention is.
Uh, Madam Chair, we're ready to proceed.
Okay. Uh, I was just trying to save Mr. Fortune some breath, so go ahead.
That's okay. Um, I can't remember if I said the last one. Did I say the last one, 20?
Yes, you did.
Okay, great. All right, so I'm going to go to six. This is for six, Ria Erickson Street. This is erect a new mixed-use four- and five-story structure at 6R Erickson on Lot 1. Structure contains a parking podium with two building volumes above, one containing three floors of office, and the other four stories of multifamily dwelling units. A landscaped deck occupies a portion of Level 2. The violation is Article 25, Section 5, the flood hazard district. Article 65, Section 18. This is use of waterfront service district. Article 65, Section 19, the proposed FAR is excessive. Article 65, Section 19, the proposed building height is in feet is excessive. Article 65, Section 19, the maximum residential percentage of GFA is excessive. Article 65, Section 19, the proposed front yard is insufficient. Article 65, Section 19, the proposed side yard is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 41, the proposed off-street parking is insufficient. This is for 8R Erickson Street. Direct a new one-story boat storage and maintenance building with address to 8R Erickson and a new marina on Lot 3. Marina consists of both land and waterside improvement, pairs, ramps, boat slips, as well as accessory office, lounge, and restroom space. The violation is Article 25, Section 5, flood hazard district. Article 65, Section 19, proposed building height is excessive in feet. This is for 18R Erickson. Direct a new five-story structure at 18R Erickson on a portion of Lot 2. 18R Erickson is now, is a new mixed-use five-story structure with lobby and local service retail on the ground level and multifamily dwelling units on the upper levels. Lot 2 also contains a structure also known as 20R Erickson. Violation is Article 25, Section 5, flood hazard district. Article 65, Section 18, use of waterfront district. Article 65, Section 19, 18R and 20R combined on the same lot exceed both maximum residential percentage, GFA, and maximum residential lot coverage. Article 65, Section 19, the proposed FODA ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 19, the proposed building height is excessive in feet. Article 65, Section 19, the proposed front yard is insufficient. Article 65, Section 41, the proposed off-street parking is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 42.13, two or more lots on, on the same lot. This is for 20R. Uh, Madam Chair, this is pretty much the same one violation that's different, but I, I'm going to call it into the record just for, uh, say, make sure somebody can say something. So erect a new five-story structure at 20R Erickson on a portion of Lot 2. 20R Erickson is a new mixed-use five-story structure with lobby and parking on the ground level, the multifamily dwelling units on the upper levels. Lot 2 also contains a structure also known as 18R Erickson. The violation is Article 25, Section 5, flood hazard district. Article 65, Section 18, waterfront service disuse. Article 65, Section 19, the FODA ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 19, proposed building height is excessive. Article 65, Section 19, 18R and 20R combined on the same lot exceed the residential percentage. Article 65, Section 41, proposed off-street parking is insufficient and two or more, Article 65, Section 42.13, two or more dwellings on the same lot. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Jay Igerman, Ruben, Junius, and Rose, in office at 112 Water Street. This is a complex project, so we have a few slides to orient you. Uh, if we go to the next slide, please. Uh, on this graphic, uh, the site is shown in light yellow. It's at the end of the Port Norfolk Peninsula in Dorchester. Um, on the graphic, north is actually to the right. You'll see the Southeast Expressway at the top, and then a Ponzi River, uh, towards the bottom. The Port Norfolk existing neighborhood is a one-family neighborhood. You can see that to the left of the site. And the Venetia Restaurant parking lot is right next door, just below. Next slide, please. Originally, this peninsula was built out for industry. There are old brick buildings on Erickson Street. You'll notice with our addresses, we're at the rears. We don't actually have frontage on Erickson Street. It's a large piece of land, about three and a half acres. The buildings you see are metal, uh, boat sheds. Uh, there's also a 75 Slip Marina you can see in the lower left. Uh, that was set up in the 1970s. Next slide, please. Here's the proposed site plan. You can see on the left. Uh, there are three proposed lots. There are four applications because there's one for each building. So, uh, there will be, uh, about a one and a half acres of usable open space, open to the public on the land side. Uh, starting at the southwest, that's what we call Lot 1, there's a single building. Uh, that's going to be a mix of apartments and offices and a shared parking garage. And going counterclockwise, Lot 2 has two buildings proposed.
Okay, so please, um, tell us on Lot 1, um, give us the details while we are at it on, um, the, the, the uses there, um, how you're meeting base flood elevation, um, and if there's anything related to Chapter 91 that we should know about.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. Um, we are complying with the new Article 25A Coastal Resilience, so the building will be raised, and the architect will give you the exact figures. The square footage is, this will be, uh, about a 96,000 square foot building, including 36,000 of general and professional office. But of that 36,000, over 11,000 is a community room available to the public. Uh, the sponsor actually would be occupying the rest of the office space. The presidential is about 33,000 square feet, total of 32 units in this building. And the shared parking garage has 100 spaces.
Okay, so let's, so, so please tell us about the breakdown on those residential units, ones, twos, average square footage.
Yes, um, overall, uh, we have that in a slide, but I'll, I'll state it to you. It's Slide 12, if you need it. 120 dwelling units overall. There are going to be 20 studios, 59 one-bedrooms, and 41 two-bedrooms. Uh, the average size, mean average, 494 for the studios, 671, uh, for the one-bedrooms. I, I think it's the next slide. Um, and 953 for the two-bedrooms. I don't have, have the breakdown by building, but again, overall, it's 120 units.
Okay, so, so just for the, so this is just for Lot 1.
Yes, so, uh, Madam Chair, thank you. The, the breakdown for building A and the residential units is eight studios, um, 11 one-bedrooms.
Sorry, eight studios, eight studios, um.
Eight, yeah, eight studios.
11 one-bedrooms.
11 one-bedrooms and 13 two-bedrooms for a total of 32 units.
That's the first lot, Madam Chair, to the, to the left.
Okay, and how will parking be accommodated?
There's shared parking for this, uh, shared parking for the site. Most of it is in a 100-car garage in the first lot that we were just talking about. But there are also 15 more spaces in a shared parking garage on Lot 2.
Okay. Okay, so thank you. So this is Lot 1, and Lot 1 does not include the boathouse, right?
Correct, that's Lot 3, Madam Chair, at the top right corner.
Sure, let's go to Lot 2 then.
Okay, uh, let me get the number.
Go to, uh, previous.
Go to previous slides, share the lots.
Yes, for a breakdown of the units on Lot 2, Madam Chair. Building B, which is the first residential unit closest to Erickson Street, we have eight studios, 28 one-bedrooms, and 12 two-bedrooms, for a total of 48 units. And Building C, which is the one closest to the water, we have 20 studios, 16 one-bedrooms, and four two-bedrooms, for a total of 40 units.
Okay. And will there be offices on this lot, Lot 2? Or is it purely residential?
There will be ground-floor retail, 3,600 square feet, but no office.
Okay. Okay.
To continue, the zoning is waterfront service. This was a result in 1989 of a community planning process. So there needs to be zoning relief in order to allow by conditional use the non-boating uses, so the office use and the residential. There's also a cap on the amount of residential space under this old zoning, 25%, so we've requested variances from that. There are height variances sought. The basic height limit is 35 feet from the zoning.
I'm sorry, did you go through Lot 3?
No, no, ma'am. We go to Lot 3 now. So the suburb is Lot 3. Lot 3 is the boathouse. It's purely boathouse use. It's shown at, doesn't really matter which graphic you use, but it's the largest building at Lot 3 at the northwesterly corner of the site. It's over an acre lot. It's a 22,300-square-foot building, the boathouse, and it rises to 49 feet above grade.
Okay, and is this what you're saying is your open space when you talk about the one and a half acres?
If we could go back to the presentation, I'm sorry, perhaps Slide 6. The open space is spread out across the site. Most of it is on the waterfront directly. So that also, part of the site is subject to Chapter 91, the northwesterly corner, but actually, the southerly part of the site is not subject to Chapter 91. But the open space covers both. Perhaps I should turn it over to Kevin to show you the...
Madam Chair, Mr. Secretary, members of the Board, Kevin Diebler, Rudy, architects, as well, I reside in Dorchester. Specifically, Article 25 and 25A deal with resiliency in open space which compound the conditions leading to our height and density. This is a view that shows the improvements we would make to the public way off of Erickson Street. We believe it is also our duty to make sure that the open space that's required at the water's edge is accessible and that public understands how to use this space. You can keep going through the slides. The next slide shows exactly what we're talking about, this rendering, the type of open space that the public is looking for. The open space needs to be accessible, free to use, and create safety.
Yeah, so we understand Harbor Walk. We understand all this. What I've heard criticism about is that some of these projects that are on the waterfront use the requirement, the basic requirement of Harbor Walk and other Chapter 91 requirements as their open space, you know, predominantly to meet their open space requirement. And I think my question to you is, you know, what is there in addition that will bring, make this proposed community more robust?
To make this community more robust, it's for reuse of this particular piece of property. This has been an important part of Dorchester's history, its connection to the water, which has really been closed off for the greater, for its existence. It's been a private industrial use or a private marina.
Got it, got it.
Yes.
And will the buildings be any level of lead, or how will they be?
Yes, these are, we have decided to use the passive house system. So this would be, all the residential buildings themselves will be passive house certified. As well, we'll be looking at the boathouse and office buildings to test the passive house system on those types of uses, which have never been done before. But we are looking at reducing the energy use for all of these buildings in this process.
So a couple of other questions. So you need relief on this office and residential requirement of 25% in the WS zoning district. Can you tell us what you're at in your proposal?
Yes, at Lot 1, there will be 38% residential, exceeding the 25% cap. At Lot 2, across the two buildings, it's much higher. The residential would be 90% of the gross floor area, rather than the 25%.
Okay, and then Lot...
And of course, there's no residential at Lot 3.
Okay. So I guess cumulative, and is there a reason why you're keeping the lots separately?
Yes, actually, right now, it's pretty chaotic. There are seven lots, according to city records, so this is actually a simplification. And it allows the project to be developed in phases, but of course, everything is shared across the three lots.
I guess my question then, the reason I was asking is, is there a proposal down the future to combine lots? Because I was just trying to figure out then what your average would be above that 25%. It looks like it would be about 50, maybe 60%?
I can check that number quickly. The overall square footage of the project gross floor area, it's about 203,000 square feet, and multifamily is 109. So it's slightly over 50%. You're correct.
Okay. Okay, so 50% residential, okay. Okay.
Madam Chair, apologies for interrupting. I did want to correct the Building C breakdown, as I think I might have given you incorrect numbers there.
Okay.
So for studios, it's four units. For one-bedrooms, it's 20 units. And for two-bedrooms, it's 16 units.
Okay.
For a total of 40 units.
Okay, 40.
Apologies.
Okay, so 40, not 44? No, no, I think...
Correct, 40, yep. So there should be 120 units total across all three residential buildings.
Okay. Okay. Let me just see what else. So how will you be meeting Chapter 91 guidelines about water-dependent uses?
The water-dependent zone is only at that top-right corner at the boathouse.
Okay.
So that's how we're complying there. That's all boating and waterfront service.
Okay.
One of the site plans actually shows the Chapter 91 lines, and it really came to be a part of how we parcelized the lot so that one of these lots could, you know, straightforwardly be water-dependent and manage through the process of state filings, et cetera. But we've been working through the complexities of those lines and where they fit. The setbacks from the water's edge to comply with Chapter 91, so we're inside that jurisdiction area. But as you mentioned, the idea of open space, you can get to and then return from the site safely with the public way improvements that we're creating at Erickson Street.
Okay. So let me just also ask you a couple of other questions. Are there going to be any, there are no three-family units proposed? You max out at two bedrooms?
That's correct, Madam Chair. There are no three bedrooms proposed. But the onsite affordable is at 16 units, I should have said.
16 units out of the 120 are affordable?
Correct.
What percentage of that is that?
It's slightly over 13. It rounds up to 16. It's 15 and a fraction. It's 13%.
13%. Okay. And then finally, talk to me and us about traffic, because this is not a highly-trafficked zone, except for events. So tell us how this development and how the neighborhood will accommodate the traffic.
Yes. So that was obviously a clear focus over the last five years during large project review and the community outreach. And the project mix has changed over that time in order to optimize for traffic. At one time, there was actually a hotel proposed, and that was eliminated. But I'll turn it over to Quinn. There's actually going to be a pilot for a shuttle service. If you can talk about that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So there's really three items here to talk through about traffic as it was a concern from the neighborhood that was brought up through the Article 80 process. In doing that, through that process, we did have three major items that were listed in the BPDA Board memo. The first being a TDM plan that we worked on with the BPDA and BTD to ensure that we're limiting and reducing the amount of traffic coming to and from the site. So that includes bike parking, Blue Bike Station, et cetera, trying to get people out of cars. The second one is...
We know that bikes can be kind of risky when you just get off of this peninsula.
Correct.
So besides bikes, what else? Did you say a shuttle?
Yep, so the second program is a pilot shuttle service that would go from the site to JFK UMass Station, connecting this neighborhood back to the MBTA station. That was a specific item that we wanted to make sure that was in this plan, not only to help the neighborhood, but also to help us as the future office tenants as well. And then...
Got it.
And then the, apologies, the third item was the, was a slow street study. So through that Article 80 process, we did include a slow street study to be funded by the proponent and facilitated by us that would replicate the BTD's slow streets program for this neighborhood to reduce the amount of traffic and speeding through the neighborhood.
So there is no zip car parking or something like that for those who periodically need cars for grocery shopping or things like that?
We haven't negotiated the TAPA yet. I suspect that will be an ask, but it's so far, it's not been required. There are, by the way, 25% EV vehicle spaces, though, so that has been already baked in.
Okay. Okay, so let's see if my math is right. So there's 100-car garage plus 15, so 115 spaces for 120 residential units and 36,000 square feet of office. Okay. Okay. Let's just see. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, this is quite a project. The plans technically are really good. I think the questions that I have really have to do with the fact that this is sort of a jewel of a site, and there's very few like them anywhere in the city. And so it just raises a whole host of questions. So let me start with, first of all, on the residential units, is there a mix of rental and for sale, or is there all one or the other?
I believe it's all rental.
It's all rental. And you said that the affordability was 13%, which is the absolute minimum under, you know, city regulations. Was there not, I'm surprised there wasn't pressure to, from the community, to move that number higher?
Yes, thank you. And one of the things that we worked on when we first came onto this project a year ago was to bring the IDP units back into the project. Originally, there were plans to be moved somewhere else outside of this project as part of it. So we did work to make sure that that was included back into the program here, which took a good amount of effort on our ends to ensure that we could meet that 13%.
So 13, there's 13% onsite. Is there additional contribution to the fund?
There is not. We are just over the 13% at 13.3, so no.
And while you, I mean, you hit the minimum, but I just, my point is it is the minimum. But let me move on. I mean, the real question is that is this going to be a, you know, this is one of the, like I said, sort of a jewel of the waterfront of Boston. And it's been underutilized, and this will certainly make a much better utilization of the space. But the real question is, has to do with public access. And if you've got 150 space, parking spaces, and you've got 120 or so, if I'm a little wrong on the numbers, 120 residential units, and you've got office, where is the public, if someone drives there, where are they going to park?
Now, it's a good question. I want to first emphasize that the public access is not just on the perimeter. So there is across the whole site. But you're correct in that probably the most likely public users are going to be the neighborhood residents. That's true, because the peninsula is rather isolated, and there is not sufficient onsite parking to welcome large numbers of the public. But I'll let Quinn talk about what his vision is for who would come and visit.
Before Quinn starts, let me, I mean, let me just sort of make a point. Yes, it's an isolated peninsula, but what you are doing is going to make it a much more attractive peninsula in the same way that, you know, when the UMass Boston campus was built. You know, it's not just college students who walk that perimeter on the Harbor Walk there. I think you're going to end up, this is going to be an attraction for the whole city.
And I would absolutely...
And to pick up on Mark's point, we don't want it to feel privatized because it is public. And if any, I mean, I don't live anywhere close to Charleston, but I love walking that Charleston waterfront, and I love walking that East Boston waterfront. And so the question then becomes, how do you accommodate it so it is open to the rest of the city?
Madam Chair, may I drop that point? I'll, as a Dorchester resident, we also have that Harbor Walk around UMass Boston, which is highly utilized by all the residents. Right now, you can't walk to this site. So the fact that we do actually have lay-by parking spaces on the outside that one could come in, that would be, you know, marked with a number of, you know, limitations on the hours of use and sort of shorter time periods, somebody would be able to park and be there if they're less able to walk. But right now, this doesn't even exist as an amenity. Anybody could walk or like to. And there are plenty of people that are doing that around the waterfront.
No.
No, no, I mean, look, I mean, let me continue. I mean, clearly, this is, it's a, I mean, I find it one of the nicest parts of Boston. And I think when, if this project goes through, it's going to be that much more attractive. So you've got widened and meandering Harbor Walk experience. I'm not quite sure what that means. Public program, open space, you've got a bunch of, you know, plantings, et cetera. I mean, this is going to be a very attractive part of the city. You are really creating something very new and, I think, potentially very exciting. I just want to make sure that, as the chair said, it's not privatized and not restricted, because it won't be. And I think you're going to have, you're going to have to be prepared to accommodate a very high degree of interest in this.
Absolutely, and just, and thank you for that. And on the other end, I did want to mention that one of the comments through the neighborhood process that we've heard was that we also don't want to drag too many people to this destination. The neighborhood is already concerned about the amount of people coming into and out of the neighborhood, as is. And they, on the other end, would like to see this not become, you know, the destination that everybody in the city comes to, rather a public space that's open to them and has, you know, frequent visitors instead of being that...
I get that. I just, you know, I know Port Norfolk quite well, and it's mostly single-family homes, and it's this sort of isolated, tight little neighborhood. But the truth is, this is going to be a very appealing part of the Boston waterfront. And I just, I think it's a pipe dream to think that this is not going to be appealing to a lot of people beyond, who don't just live in Port Norfolk.
Right, yeah. And the last thing we wanted to do was close this site off. This isn't open to the public, which alludes to a little bit of the street improvements that we did along Erickson Street to really invite the public into the space.
So let me just see. The trouble that I continue to have, and I don't know if... if Mark is satisfied, but the trouble I continue to have is that the tidelines are Commonwealth tidelines and they are held for the common, for everybody who lives in the Commonwealth. It's not meant to be privatized for the residents who live in this proposed development or residents who live on the peninsula. It's supposed to be open to the public. And so I just want closure to understand exactly how you're going to provide some parking, I don't mean all 100 spaces, but some percentage of parking for those random visitors who would want to just enjoy an afternoon understanding this part of the city.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so as Jared had mentioned before, there is a shared parking program on this site. We expect that many of the residential users will be, even though we are providing a plethora of opportunities to use transit, that they will be using their cars during the day, which should open up some parking in that regard. And as well as on the surface, on the street level, there are, and please, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, about 20 parking spaces as well.
On, on the street parking, as well as, as I had mentioned in this diagram, right in between buildings B and C, there are places that one could leave their car, park, parallel park for a short period of time.
Now, how long is it going to take for resident permit parking stickers to go up? I mean, you know, so, so I think we've beaten that, but that, I, I think you understand clearly what we are asking for. Hopefully, while we continue this discussion, you can figure out exactly how that is going to be accommodated. The second thing is on the waterfront, is that also in a certain way privatized? Or is there going to be any programs or anything that is, that is going to bring, you know, residents from, you know, a little bit in from Dorchester to that, to that pier, to that public pier?
Madam Chair, this is a balancing point for this, this project and how it was formed. And our, we mentioned some of the initial uses that did look like we were creating a destination here. We have been able to work with the community on the scaling of this kind of open space. And the words meandering and pathways are intended to create a place where people can move. The program open space is actually called out here on this plan would be around the pier, potential water taxi access, fishing resources and things that people can get onto the water sheet. These are amenities that we've worked in. Obviously, we need this project to move forward to solidify what the program vision is there. But Chapter 91 is very clear about how we would be using our open space in the future. And, but really, driving a destination and making sure people know that this is there, this is the open space that people deserve in Dorchester. And to be a rare kind of project, we do need to balance what the, what we've learned from this community on what they want to see here.
Yes, I, I, you know, I think a number of us know Port Norfolk pretty well. Number of us know it from the WS zoning. But you know, there are some good programs, like, you know, all the work that's happened in East Boston on Pierce Park and that sailing program or other things like that, that could bring some, you know, good activity to children and youth in the neighborhood that I'm surprised that you haven't explored some further. Because all I can see as I look at this is just an extension of some of the stuff that's happened in, in, in the seaport, where we look back and say, oh my God, how did it end up being and feeling so isolated, so privatized, so non-welcoming in the design, but more importantly, in the programming. And I, and I will, I will put my, my hat on from my experience is that now in the organization I used to work for, we're trying to figure out how to bring equity to the waterfront in the seaport. You know, how do you bring residents who have very little experience on the waterfront to the waterfront to enjoy this common, this public amenity?
I would add, Madam Chair, that this group has, has been very dedicated to the, this being a, a working waterfront that primarily has a focus on fishing and, and using water safely with a new marina. This would be very different than the seaport and its quality. Its scale is much different. And actually, you would be getting much closer to people who would be using the water than you would in the seaport. And this really has tapered back from that kind of initial vision to something that's much more neighborhood scale towards that. And, and we have not talked a lot about our amenities and outreach into that part of the community.
Any other questions from the board?
No, just, I would just summarize, Madam Chair. The plan, the plans themselves are very good.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. The project has gone through the community process for over four and a half years and through multiple revisions for design, unit count, mean space, and everything else in terms of development with both support and opposition. Throughout the process, neighbors expressed concerns regarding climate mitigation efforts. However, there seemed to be consensus regarding acceptable unit count, parking and design. The BPDA Board voted in support of the project in January. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckern with City Council, Frank Baker's office. We're in support of the project, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have support letters.
All right, Minor, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Minor Perez representing the carpenters union. Madam Chair, on behalf of hundreds of union carpenters, illegal work across the city of Boston, want to go on record and support, in particularly, our members living in the city of Dorchester. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no additional raised hands. Oh, some, the raised hand just came up. Go to Stephen Donahue. Go ahead. Stephen, are you looking to give testimony on this proposal?
Yes, this is Pastor Steve Donahue from Christ Community Church, 51 Walnut Street. I've been at the pastor for 20 years and lived there for about four years in the community.
Mr. Donahue, Mr. Donahue, Pastor Donahue, I believe that you're, were you here for Erickson or were you here for Clap Street?
I was in support of Erickson, that's true. But I, I just came in and seeing this being the waterfront and I was just concerned about the volume of getting in and out of the port.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I didn't mean to cut you off, but I do know that you had wanted to speak about another project.
Yes, that's abutting, yes, that abuts the Christ Community Church. I was just a little, I love the idea of having the port and that many residents there as a pastor. I'm just a little concerned with the, the in and out of there. It's just, it's hard to get out of the port. Being a resident there for four years, I'm just a little, I'm wondering about the traffic volume coming in and out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and John Lyons. I'd like to request to unmute you. Or M. Lyons?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is John Lyons. I live at 176 Walnut Street in Dorchester. I am the president of Port Norfolk Civic Association. I was a member of the IAG in this project. I'm also a board member of the Napoansett Greenway Council. If you can bear with me, Madam Chair, I know you like to move these things along. I've got two paragraphs and eight bullet points. I will start by saying-
Mr. Lyons, don't read to us. Just kind of-
I'm just referencing. I can't, I can't give you all this off the top of my head.
Okay.
I think after spending, spending hundreds of hours in the last five years, together with other committed community members evaluating this project, working in good faith to find ways to resolve the issues and compromise in a manner which would benefit the neighborhood as well as our future neighbors, it's more than frustrating having worked with changing personnel at the BPDA and within the development team to finally see the project rush to a conclusion at the end of the COVID madness. We all know the way things have worked in the last couple of years with these zone meetings. It's just not the same as meeting in person. And we really did try in good faith to reach some sort of common ground on this project. I will start by saying, we want union jobs, we want housing, but we deserve a project with works for the community as well as our future neighbors and respect the unique environment adjacent to the Napoansett River within the area of critical environmental concern where this project sits. It's literally the mouth of the Napoansett River, right in the estuary. It's a very special project, as everyone has said. As far as the open space is concerned, we've got a four-acre park, Finnegan Park, within 1,000 feet of this site. So dangling more open space is not going to work to getting to years. What I would really suggest here, if anyone, everyone would consider, respectfully defer this project until the process can be completed in good faith. And the alternative, the way it sits now is to deny, because it just doesn't fit. It's premature. To go way back, 1988, which is in ancient history, but it was 1988, the Port Norfolk Plan, a definitive plan, was prepared by the Boston Redevelopment Authority with input from every relevant state and local agency. It identified every issue raised by the community members during this process. That was followed by the first iPod in the city, the creation of the Port Norfolk District in the, in the City of Boston zoning code. And that district information was essentially incorporated by reference into Article 65, which was adopted in 2001. It's not ancient history. One of the most important things that the BRA Plan itself suggested was that the waterfront should not be lined with tall structures. And yet, in a neighborhood with a 35-foot height limit, which is respected everywhere else, these people are going to almost double that height. There's no justification for it other than their economic need. And I know as in the nearly 30-minute presentation by the proponent, there was not one mention of any kind of a hardship. And a hardship is a critical element of granting zoning relief. I don't need to tell you that, but I just noticed that and I, I think it needs to be brought up. The density, this project will result in a 43% increase in the number of housing units on less than 10% of the land in the peninsula. The water-dependent use is a critical change. It will change one of the last pieces of working waterfront in the city of Boston to essentially a residential enclave with an attached office structure. The shared parking plan has not been tested. If it fails, the only alternative is to park in the neighborhood streets, both frankly in the river. And I'm not joking when I say that. We're isolated from the outside of the South East Expressway and the railroad tracks. There's no other place to go. During COVID, the business model has changed for office workers. We all know that. We're remote here now. Office work now is logically remote. No indication that it will ever go back fully to the old office model. Their reliance on shared parking, I think, may have worked before COVID, but it doubtless worked now.
Thank you.
And one other interesting question about their parking. If you look at their site plan, not part of their project, but immediately adjacent, is a distillery. That distillery has an occupancy rating by ISD of 149 persons. It's got 19 parking spaces. They regularly run events in that, in that space. Up until now, they've used the overflow area of this site for their overflow parking. I'm sure that's not going to happen when there are 120 units with 115 parking spaces. Immediately adjacent on the other side is the Venezia Complex, an extremely good restaurant, a great function hall, a great winery. No complaints about any of their operations. They've got 350 parking spaces. They're all used at certain points during the year. There's no other place to go. This is a public transportation desert. The site is 100 miles from the nearest bus line, then over one mile to the Redwood. The traffic access issues were identified in 1988 when there was much less traffic. Even then, it was essentially concluded that the traffic issues are intermittent, particularly in the Hudson Circle. Finally, the marina plan, I suspect, may just be a Trojan horse to qualify something under Chapter 91, because their construction management plan schedules that to be completed last out of the entire project. There are many informed residents in this neighborhood or active in an, in an existing yacht club who strongly believe that it's not financially feasible based on current costs. In fact, this mooring area has not been dredged in 15 years. The Port Norfolk Yacht Club, with half the size, which has a regular program of dredging the mooring area every six to seven years, recently spent a million dollars dredging their area because of the difficulty in, in disposal. So again, I'm a capitalist. I'm, I'm not a socialist saying we want to take over private space, but I think this project is at least twice the size of what would actually work for that site. I think the uses are inappropriate. I think Boston cannot kiss goodbye the hope of ever having real water-to-private uses apart from yacht clubs and bars on the waterfront. This marina used to be a sort of a recreational marina, but it also had a very well-functioning boat repair operation. They had a 50-ton left. Boston police and Boston fire department boats used to be pulled out and serviced in that location, and now they have to go outside the sea.
So Mr. Lyons, you know, I, I was waiting for you because I remember your role in the Port Norfolk zoning. But I do need to ask you if there's, if you can close your comments, because we do have others who are waiting to, to comment, okay? Thank you.
You have to unmute yourself. Go unmute, Mr. Lyons.
Mr. Lyons, can you unmute yourself?
I'm sorry about that. In, in conclusion, I thank you very much for hearing me out. I, my only thought here is that a no-build option is not a rational option. I said that in the beginning. I've said it for five years. This project is too tall. It's too dense. I think the mix of uses is inappropriate. Parking is nowhere near sufficient. I'd be willing to spend more time working on it, with an open mind. And I would respectfully request that the developer consider the same thing and that the board allow it to flow here, even if it's only for three to four months.
Thank you.
Mr. Lisa, you've, you've been spending a lot of time tech, sending notes. Would you like to go on the record?
Can you send him a message to unmute?
You're asking?
His hand is up, as I can see. No, maybe it was. I don't know.
Mr. Lisa, unmute again, Madam Chair? No. Mr. Lisa, you've been unmuted?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak. I find this a very exciting project, but after 16 years of working coastal management and eight years as director of Seaport Advisory Council, I find the project as presented does take away opportunities and access for the public in general. It basically privatizes the area and causes a lot of concern that the Chapter 91 regulations that requires that you have to step back in an option for ripper and rights are not being maintained. And I would like to see the proponents take this back, work a little bit more about how they allow people to access from the street to the water's edge and for people coming from the water's edge when landed by the ferries or whatever boats you're having, where do they go once, once they're on the land side? I think it needs a little more work. I agree. It is a very nice-looking project, but I agree with Mr. Lyons that there's some work that needs to be done. And maybe a little more thought would be helpful because we do need access to the water's edge for people who are inland and for people who come to visit and who own a very, very nice site. And I know it's a Venezia restaurant at least 10 times a year. And I like walking around. I'm sure the people do too. So thank you very much for letting me speak.
Mr. Lisa, could you put your address on the record, please? You said your name and your address.
Yes, Louis Lisa, 68 Seaver Street, Boston, Mass. Yes, Louis Lisa, 68 Seaver Street, Boston, Mass. 0212.
Thank you.
Okay, let's hear from one more person.
Okay, Cheryl S. Sent a request to unmute you.
Good afternoon. Yes, good afternoon, can I be heard?
Yep, can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, greeting, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm an owner and resident in the Port Norfolk Peninsula Neighborhood at 171 Walnut Street. My name is Cheryl Sweden. At this time, I'm in opposition of the Napontsack Warf project moving forward today. My request is that a decision be deferred today for further discussion with the Port Norfolk neighborhood. I'm concerned how this project has advanced thus far. It's my understanding that the Impact Advisory Group never reached a consensus and no final public meeting was ever held. Traffic is still a concern. I heard information regarding a trial shuttle that was referenced in the presentation today. I have heard many presentations. I am also a member of the Port Norfolk Neighborhood Association and have been following this project for a little over two years since I have become a resident of Boston and owner and resident in the peninsula. It is concerning regarding the traffic. So my concern is with the shuttle. With the shuttle, that that is a trial and what would happen moving forward and would other residents other than those involved at the Erickson Street or residents or occupants be- have access to that shuttle? The other concern-
Ma'am, thank you. I should have, it's my problem, I should have reminded everybody to give us new information. So, thank you. Thank you for participating in this process. And thank you for giving us your comments. So, let me just see. I think... Okay, who is this? Who is Emma? Okay, so, let's see, Jeff. You know, I know this has been through an Article 80 process, Mr. Hampton from the BPDA. This has been through the Article 80 process. It sounds like the BPDA Board has approved it. But there still seems to be a number of outstanding issues about the waterfront and waterfront access for the general public. Is there any comment you want to make or anybody from the BPDA who might want to make a comment?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to defer to Stephen Harvey, who is the PM for this project. Madam Chair-
Yes, please put your name and address on the record. And if you could very specifically respond to the questions that Mr. Ehrlich and I have been focused on, and that is general public access and maintaining of that access. And I think somebody else also suggested something about how will members of the public bring their boats in there? And what's the way of accessing that?
So, my name is Stephen Harvey, and I live on Armidine Street in Dorchester, neighborhood in Boston. What I'll say to the, as far as access to the shoreline, the project does in its community, our mitigation does provide 2.17 acres, 97,000 square feet of publicly, privately owned public space. So the public will have access to over two acres of space. We made sure that not only does this project contribute in that way, but also mitigating some of the traffic concerns and some of the, I want to say, traffic concern and some of the resilient concerns that the community brought up to the best ability of this project. We did also originally, I'm the third project manager on this project, but when this project was originally proposed in 2017, it was much bigger than what was proposed. And after conversations with the IAG, there was a reduction to the point where the unit count is at 120 and the mostly used for office and water recreational use. Now, how the WRF will be run, that would be determined, how, because it is a private entity, the WRF itself. But I believe that the development team will be working with the neighborhood to make sure that public access is as- can be as maintained as possible. The development team, RISE, tends to stay on the site and have their offices on their site. And meetings, we've made sure that and made an understanding that they should be a good neighbors to the residents around them.
So, you know, Mr. Harvey, I know it's difficult coming in as the- did you say third project manager on this? I know it's a difficult thing to do. But has the City of Boston Environment Department looked at some of the thoughts about climate ready, about, you know, introducing more wetlands or whatever it is, to just make sure that all these buildings will in fact be sustainable for the long term?
Yes, that was, during my time as project manager, that was putting together a community benefits- community benefits package and mitigation was my number-one role. The reason, discussions that we had with our resiliency team was making sure that the buildings, one, were at the appropriate levels for water rise, and also that folks that were living in the building or working in the building would be able to enter and leave the site without any emergency assistance. So, besides the transportation mitigation that was provided, which was substantial, we also made sure that resiliency concerns were priority. That is what Port Norfolk and the community absolutely have as their number-one concern. And they have done a lot of- they have done a lot already with the open space that they have surrounding the area. But we made sure to, in effect, fortify that.
Okay, thank you. So let me go back to the development team. You've heard what the concerns are. Can you just let me know what your thoughts are on how you will provide or propose to provide public access and to ensure that that stays into the future? Because I feel your tentativeness and I understand the the concerns that the Port Norfolk community has. But we also have to understand that the waterfront is a public resource.
Yes, Madam Chair, understood completely. It's clear that we need to give you more detail. So I would suggest that we defer an order provided. I can state categorically that the public access must be provided. As you well know, especially in the Chapter 91 area, there will be a management plan that's approved by Mass EP Waterways. But I think we would all be best served if we provide that information explicitly so that you have it and you have these details. We don't want there to be any question that there could possibly be a privatization, which is not our intention.
And when do you expect the EP Waterways to, you know, provide you with their decision?
Probably not in the near horizon, it's probably months away, knowing their backlog. They will not review the management plan until you get through the licensing process. But that does not mean we can't provide our proposal to this board sooner.
I'm just going to- So, Mr. Ambassador, can you mute everybody but the board members, please?
Sure.
So I'd like to just have a conversation with board members, because I do feel that, in a lot of ways, the development team has thought through their projects, but there are some outstanding issues. I think my question is whether, since we've heard the entire merits of the case, we've heard the neighborhood, we've heard everybody. Is it thoughtful of us to make a decision today but have some kind of information or have the final decision dependent on the submittal of certain pieces of information? So this is something I toss out to the board. May we have a discussion on that?
I would be prepared to make a motion today at the request that the development, that final approval be contingent on the development team providing us with more information. This has been a lengthy, lengthy process. In many ways, it's a really good proposal. So that's my feeling.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I would be fine with that as well.
Okay, so, Mr. Ehrlich, do you want to put that motion on the table? Approval with, I'm assuming, design review? And let's just itemize what it is that we want to see, okay?
Yeah, I would be prepared to make a motion to approve this project with BPDA Design Review. And I ask that the, within a specified timeframe, two months, that the development team provides us with more information about guarantees of public access, what the amenities will be, how the marina will be handled, and any issues of additional transportation and parking that may come up as mitigation for the impact of this project.
So if I can- So there are, within two months, we're going to bullet point it, and I'm just going to reverse your thing only because it's just right in front of me, is, within two months, we want our transportation details. That's A. And B is everything connected to the waterfront related to waterfront, public access, marina. And I'm sorry, I might have missed something else, Mr. Porter.
No, I mean, that's generic enough. We want to be able to enjoy the meandering harbor walk experience.
And also use of the waterfront, right? Because we want to make sure that, yeah, okay? Do you want to- Anything else that- Anything else that we have, that we would want to understand?
Madam Chair, this is Tom. Just, if the board does need additional information from the developer, I would suggest that defer to consider any new information, because the open meeting law requires that-
I think what we will do- I'm sorry, Tom, to interrupt you, but we can bring this as board final arbiter to, not board, is it board final arbiter? To reconsider all these things. So that, I think that will meet open meeting law, but in the meantime, the applicant does have a chance to respond to what it is that we need. I'm sorry, I just went dark and I just want to know that everything's okay. Is everything okay?
Okay, fine.
You can hear me fine, my screen went blank, so I don't know what's happening. So, does that make sense, Tom? Bringing it in as board final arbiter?
Madam Chair, I just, you know, if the board is going to change its decision on, based on the new information, I think that redoicing and having, like, just a deferral for us-
Yeah, I just feel that we've heard the- We've heard the merits of it in its entirety, and I think, I don't think our decision will change because in concept, we are we are in support, but there are details which we're not in support of. And that is, and that is what is tying us all up in knots here.
That would still be my recommendation that the board have a defer.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Anything else to add to those two things? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Can I ask the technical team at the board if you could please see if there's a reason that I cannot be- see the screen or have anything on it?
We can see it on the board.
Yeah, but I, okay. I don't know what happened. Okay, so let's, I'm sorry for this, it is now almost 1 o'clock. Let us take a five-minute break, reconvene at 1:00, and then we will go to the rediscussion, is okay?
Madam Chair, we still have one case.
Oh, we still have one case, oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, let's go ahead.
We're going to call the lost case for 10:30. Calling case BOA 1295793, 32 to 32 C Taylor Street.
Sorry, let me Google that, I don't know.
That was for some reason, no. Okay, got, demolished, thank you, sorry.
This was demolishing existing structure, erecting core unit dwelling townhouse design building and providing parking for eight vehicles via an existing curb cut. The violation is Article 65, Section 8. The MFR is forbidden use in a 2.5,000 sub-district. Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking is insufficient. Oh, I'm sorry. Off-street parking requirement, proposed parking is tandem, which limits maneuverability. Article 65, Section 32, this is in Oval A District. Review required. Article 65, Section 9, the fluid ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the duffel heads excessive in stories. And Article 65, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Mark Savatsky. I'm the property owner and developer for 32 Taylor Street. And for the record, my address is 4 Payne Street, Dorchester, Mass. 02122. This application seeks to raise an existing structure on a 7,600-square-foot lot and erects four family-style townhouses intended for homeownership. Each townhouse is 1,730 square feet with three beds and two and a half baths and two off-street tandem parking spaces. Each includes a private roof deck which shall be accessed via a hatch. We're seeking relief for multifamily MFR, whereas this is a 2.5,000 sub-district. Although tandem parking is allowed under Article 65, each spot must be independently maneuverable. And so we're seeking relief for vehicle maneuverability. Our FAR is .91, whereas .5 is allowed. Building height under number of stories is three, whereas 2.5 is allowed. Finally, side yard setback on the left is 5.5 feet, whereas 10 is allowed. And side yard setback on the right is sufficient. Thank you for your time and attention, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so your side yard where you have the 5.5 proposed, how far is the adjacent building from you?
If we were to pull up a street view, my estimate, it would be about 12 feet, maybe 15 feet.
Okay, okay. And those roof decks would be individual roof decks, okay? How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no question. I think this side of the area has a mix of different-sized buildings, and I think it's fairly consistent with some of the adjacent buildings. And they're seen-
Madam Chair, Mr. D'Amico has spoke on this?
Yeah.
Would you like to use the record, please?
Yes, please.
This is from Mr. D'Amico at BTD. Regards to 32 to 34 C Taylor Street, reduce the number of spaces from eight to four.
Okay. Also, do you have your condenses next to your neighbors?
We can relocate those to the roof, Madam Chair, they are shown on the side yard, but I'll be happy to make that change.
Yeah, we hear enough complaints about those.
Understood.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. George Quinn with Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. Our office posted in the Butters meeting for the project on February 8th. The Butters and the Civic Association were generally in support. There was some concern regarding open space and size. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of board, John McEcrin, City Councilor Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support of the project.
Chair, secretary here, we do have a few letters of support.
Thank you.
Have I raised hand, I'll start with you, Bob? You looking to give testimony on this proposal?
Yes, I just, I'm concerned about maneuverability, and I think-
Is your name and address for the record, please?
Bob D'Amico, Boston Transportation Department.
Oh, sorry, okay, thanks.
Okay.
All right, and then I'll go to Stephen Donnie.
I think you might have been on a previous-
Okay.
Hi, this is Pastor Steve Donnie. I'm a direct abbot to this property, it's in back of the church. I'm in favor of this, and I think it'd be good for the community and obviously for the church. Thank you.
Thank you. And then John Lyons. You looking to give testimony on this one?
Yes, my name's John Lyons, 176 Walnut Street.
Yes, my name's John Lyons, 176 Walnut Street. I'm president of the Port Melbourne Civic Association. We met on this, we took a vote, it was unanimous to support. I just want to say specifically that this developer is a great example of how things should be done. He went to the Butters first, he figured out what would work, designed a building which fits in with the architecture around it, and the violation on the parking is his attempt to create more parking than is required by the code.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Miss Ambassador, anybody else?
No, ma'am, we have no testimony.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve, I think, with BPD A design reviews. I think specifically looking at the rear yard, the parking. I'm not sure, I understand the conflict of too much parking and too little, but I think there's a blend here that could work for the community.
And I think the BPD A recommendation says with attention to materials and surrounding neighborhood context.
Yeah, and the condenser is to the roof, but I assume that's a pretty easy one.
Yeah. So were you including materials and neighborhood context?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now 101, we will reconvene at 110. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, can you make that 115, I don't have the...
Recording in progress. This meeting is being recorded.
The March 22nd zoning board of appeal is now resuming. Before we begin, I did want to make a change to request that the, that the, that the minutes reflect that I misspoke and that I did mean to say call of the chair rather than BFA, to get an update on those addresses on Erickson Street, on the information that they are requesting.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'll make your request then.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your input on it, that's why I was kind of confused about, about what was going on, but at least I got the language right. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Fortune, with your...
Madam Chair, it is 115, I'll be to 116. Mr. Joseph has an appointment at 145, and I was wondering if we could take the interpretation out of, out of context, because it is 115, 116, if we do need him. Do you think that we need him?
Let's see, so yes, we do, because they're suggesting that ISD erred. So yes, let's go to the...
Okay, is the applicant on for Columbia Road?
What's the name?
Francis Burke?
Francis Burke?
Well, somebody representing 1514 R Columbia Road. Okay, I'm going to call into the record.
Okay.
Calling case BOA 128-6861, 1514 R Columbia Road. Name and address for the record, please.
Francis Burke, 24 Mount Oak Street, Dedham, Mass. 02026.
Okay, so in this case, the petitioner, is that you, Mr. Burke?
Yes.
You seek a determination that ISD erred in issuing the permit U491272862.
Yes, that's correct.
The permit was issued as an allowed use. Is there anybody on who is representing the owner at 1514 R Columbia Road?
Are you Matthew Fitzgerald? You can unmute yourself, you are previous.
Yes, Madam Chair, Matthew Fitzgerald, Sullivan, Worcester. I will be representing 1514 Condominium Trust, Columbia Road Condominium Trust. And one of the unit owners, Lauren Tolman.
Okay, so Mr., so now that I have that, and then is, and Mr. Joseph, will you put your name and address on the record, too? Is Mark Joseph on or not?
Madam Chair, I just, I just spoke with Mark Joseph, he is on the Zoom. I just don't know whether he's available.
No, and I just want to make sure that ISD is represented on this, too.
Can you hear us? Are you on the name of this mark? Or is that Marco?
Okay, in the meantime, Mr. Burke, can you tell us exactly why it is you think that ISD erred in its determination?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. 1514 R Columbia Road, South Austin, it's in Ward 7, it's non-conforming structure behind a structure. Non-conforming, extension of non-conforming, Article 9, Section 1, says it needs public notice.
Okay, so why, why are you thinking that this was issued in error? So tell us what, what happened to the property that made you think that this was a mistake in the permit issuance by ISD?
I, I, I received documents from Mark Joseph on December 20th, and in those documents, I discovered a fraudulent forged certified plot plan and a flawed maneuver... and a flawed maneuverability report which shows vehicles striking each other. I visited with the engineer who prepared the report. He says he did not use the Boston zoning code to prepare his report. I also have my own private engineer's report, which I gave to the board today.
So wait a second. So where do you live? What's your address?
I own 1512 Columbia Road in South Austin. I'm the director of, but we share a right of way.
Okay, so you own 1512 and you share right of way?
Yes.
And so your issue, your issue is with the parking?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's the layout of the parking?
It's, they've been written multiple violations by the city for no parking. I was assured by the by the city that they'd be taken in the court for their illegal parking. We have zoning code, we have zoning code refusals. We have violations issued. That picture you're showing right now, that's the forged document. I visited with the architects on that document.
All I need to understand really is, if I can read between the lines.
Yes.
The issue that you are concerned with is that the parking at 1514 R is there. It's not permitted to be there. They are not allowed parking back there, and it's impacted you through damage to the vehicles at 1512?
No, 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 ma'am.
No?
No, ma'am. And I was referring to the maneuverability report that was placed in the record.
Maneuverability, okay.
My issue is public safety. I have eight children and I have nine grandchildren, two of whom are handicapped.
No, but you did, but you did give a suburban address. We just need to know what happens at 1512.
1512 is located on the beach. My extended family and myself, we spend a lot of time there. We have kayaks there. We have bicycles there. We fly kites across the street of the beach.
Okay, okay.
And for 70 years, it's never been parking behind 1514 Columbia Road. All the applications that were submitted said that they've been in use for 70 years. They were fraudulent.
Okay, hold on.
The first use of premises permit was rescinded by the author, John Gorman. The second one I'm in possession of now was submitted with a forged.
Okay, okay, Mr. Burke, Burke, can you? Burke, Mr. Burke, can you hold on, please? May I have the representation for the owner at 1514 Columbia Road? Tell us how this permit was issued?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Matthew Fitzgerald, Sullivan Worcester, on behalf of the permit holder, 1514 Columbia Road Condominium Trust. Just to provide a little background and context, and I'll try to summarize as quickly as I can. In February of 2020, ISD issued a violation for the failure to secure a permit for three off-street parking spaces. So Mr. Burke is correct in that sense. So ISD did cite my client in 2020. My client was unaware that the parking spaces were never properly permitted. The predecessor and interest of the prior owner constructed the parking spaces without securing proper permits to do so. So my client was unaware of that when they purchased the property. In order to correct the violation, they then filed a use supremacist permit application for two parking spaces. Originally, they tried to legalize the three. They decided at some point that the maneuverability might be a little tight. So even though they had been parking three cars back there, they decided to go ahead with with two parking spaces. So they filed a use supremacist application for two parking spaces. That application included a site plan showing the two spaces prepared by GMA Architects and a certified plot plan prepared by a registered land surveyor. It also included a maneuverability study completed by Van Ass Associates, which concluded sufficient maneuverability for two vehicles to be parked back there. Mark Joseph is the planning examiner for this application. I'm sure he can certainly elaborate as to his review.
So hold on. So the two parking spaces, when did they apply for it and when was it approved?
They applied for it in March of 21. If I can just have one brief moment, Madam Chair, I believe it was March of 21. No, I apologize. The use supremacist permit was issued in August of 21.
Okay, okay, it was for two parking spaces. Please, I don't know whose screen it is. Can you please zoom in on the lot A, please? And this was, this is a pre-existing building. So when was the building built? It did not come to this board of appeal for its change of use or anything, did it? Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes, Madam Chair, I believe the building was built in 1944.
Okay.
And please, John Gorman's also available. Correct me if I'm wrong, and he was the one that filed the permit application. So if John can speak up for any incorrect information that I might be providing.
So in other words, it's always been a three-family. It was only the issue of the parking and.
It's currently a two-family, Madam Chair.
Sorry, it's a, so it's a two-family?
Correct.
Okay, two-family, and so you, okay, got it, okay. And so these were the plans, the one on the on the screen on the right-hand side that was used to permit the spaces?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Joseph, can you please put your name and address on the record and tell us what's going on? Miss Ambassador, is Mr. Joseph on?
Can I go down? Can you hear me?
Yes, okay, you're off.
Can I be heard now?
Yes, you can hear me, Mark.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair, for bringing me a hand here. So there was an application for use of premises for three parking spaces, which was denied due to maneuverability. It was very tight, as the previous intervenant said. And then they applied for two, and that permit was rescinded because there was a right-of-way issue that went to court, and the court ordered a decision for that right-of-way to remain. So the 1514 rear can access it anytime due to previous argument made by both the front and the back. And then they reapplied for a permit for use of premise. They submitted plans. This is the right-of-way here, as you can see. And then the next slide will show the two parking, the two parking spaces. I believe they should be there.
So Mr. Joseph, the right-of-way is accessible by both parties at 1512 and 1514? And what is the width of that right-of-way?
That's about, according to the one at the back, it's 14, it's 10 feet, 10 foot 1.
It's 10 feet, and that's fine for accessing, for driveway access?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just, okay, okay.
This is the slide here that shows I've asked before I, this was approved. You can see space one and space two. I've asked for a maneuverability study for the two parking spaces before this approved. This is what I got from the engineer showing those two spaces can be accessed without any issue of maneuverability. And they're there, and they're about nine foot 20 inches. The code calls for eight and a half.
So, so Mr. Joseph, the parking spaces are completely out of the right-of-way?
That is correct.
Okay, okay, so I think now I understand. Okay, thank you. Mr. Burke? So, and now I have one more question for the representative of the owner at 1514 and for Mr. Joseph. Was this, was this information based on a registered plot plan? Or how was this determination made about this access and the parking?
Well, we have a registered land surveyor that gives the plans there, that Mr. George Collins. It's a registered land surveyor that provided the plans by which this is based on.
Okay, 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 thank you. And what is his name again?
George O.C. Collins.
Okay, 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 thank you. So Mr. Burke, may I ask you a question? Mr. Burke, are you on? Can you unmute yourself? Miss Ambassador, can you unmute Mr. Burke?
Yep, I sent a request. Frank, did you get the?
How's that?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Burke, so you are questioning the truthfulness of the land surveying job done by Mr. Collins?
Can I respond to Fitzgerald's, ma'am?
No, no, but can you just answer this question, please?
All right, I'm going to clarify. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so are you questioning the lands, the land, the plot plan came, the land surveyor George Collins came up with?
I don't know that name, ma'am. The plot plan that was given to me by Mark Joseph was prepared by Doug Stefanoff from West Broadway in South Austin.
Okay.
And he said he did not prepare it. It has his name on it. He says he didn't do it. He said the handwritten measurements are not, the false handwritten measurements are not his. I hired an engineer who disputes the plan. I introduced the engineer's report today.
Okay, so Mr., and so what was your question of the representative of the property owner?
Oh, my question to Fitzgerald, in terms of the one family for 57 years, according to ISD records, it was a single-family house. I've been at my property since 1976 for over 40 years. Bill Spain was the owner. He testified that, he has no driver's license. He testified for 50 years. There were no cars out there. It was a one, a single-family house on all the records.
Okay, so I think, hold on, Mr. Burke, hold on a minute. So when was the change of occupancy happening on the building, Mr. Fitzgerald? Was it as of right or did it go through the housing court?
No, I believe it was as of right, Madam Chair. If I can have a brief moment.
This is on Madam Chair's MFR multifamily residential.
Looks like in 2017, Madam Chair, according to the certificate of use and occupancy, it looks like in 2017, an ALT was issued to convert from a single to a two.
Okay, okay, so, so Mr. Burke, it looked like the change of occupancy was done correctly?
Correction, from a three to a two, Madam Chair.
From a three to a two, okay.
And that's May of 2017.
Okay, and when did, when did it become a three?
It's currently a two. Oh, when was it prior to that?
Yeah, I mean, what needs to be traced is, I think, the, you know, when did the increase of density occur? And did it occur legitimately?
Well, as for the use, it's multifamily, so residential, you know, so it's allowed use regardless. But I, but the driveway, the parking space.
I just put that on the record. Okay, thank you. So, so I think that we have all the information we need. Is there anything else you wanted to say, Mr. Burke?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yep.
The entire building was torn down in 2016 under H150 code. He didn't get any Board of Appeals approval. There was no neighborhood meetings. There was no law forms.
It's done as of right, so got it, yeah.
Oh, yeah, he asked the Board of Appeals, he asked the Board of Appeals to renovate a single family. They denied him. He went back and said he had a three-family. He made it into a two. The right-of-way that Mark Joseph mentions is not 10 feet wide, it's nine feet wide. And the right-of-way on 1514's property is 10 feet now, but the document you showed me earlier shows that it's 8'7" wide and 8'9" wide. The foundation was moved illegally.
Okay, so I think what we.
And one more thing, ma'am.
Go ahead, and let the screen, go ahead.
The maneuverability report that's on the screen right now shows vehicle number two driving over the proposed usable open space. And it also shows number two striking the AC units. I met with the author of that report last Friday, and he told me he did not use Boston zoning codes. He's not familiar with it. Under Article 68, it states that for the maneuverability, they've been cited for multiple violations. The maneuverability states that they need maneuverability area exclusive of the 9x20 parking spots. They do not have it. The vehicles on those drawings appear to be striking each other. They're based on the state.
Now, now, so Mr. Burke, Miss Ambassador, can you kind of mute everybody so we can just have a moment? Okay, so the very specific question that Mr. Burke asked is that ISD owed in issuing the permit for the parking. We have confirmed that the use, the change of use or the use as a two-family is legitimate under the MFR zoning. It was as of right. So it sounds to me that if Mr. Burke has a concern about the veracity of the land survey, that it's not an issue for the board to take up. The only issue before this board was about whether the parking and the access of the parking through the 10-foot or even 9-foot right-of-way was permitted. So that is how I read this. Any thoughts from the board? Hey, does this, does this mean that we are ready for a decision for a motion?
I'll make a motion that ISD did not err in issuing the permit for that very specific purpose.
I'll second that, Eric.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Burke, and all other representatives who were here for this interpretation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the 1130 case, it's a rediscussion. Calling the first case, calling GOA 106-5886, 57 Webster Street. This is a change of occupancy from a three-family dwelling to a four-family dwelling. Construct a new four-story backyard addition with exterior decks. Also construct a fifth-floor penthouse with roof deck. Remodel the entire building. Violations, Article 25, Section 5. This is a floodplain regulations. Article 2017, Section 9. This is in the East Boston Ipart. Article 53, Section 8, a multifamily dwelling is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, lardier is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor degration is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height number of stories is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the raya is insufficient. Article 53, Section 52, restructuring restrictions. And Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking isn't sufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lenz, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, with me is Kat Shea Gloropoulos with her husband Chris. I believe our architect Sharon Gentsch is from Joy Street Design is with us as well. Madam Chair, this is a pre-existing non-conforming structure located in the Jeffries Point section of East Boston. Mrs. Gloropoulos and her husband intend to occupy this as their primary residence. Kat is a 16-year veteran of the Boston Police Department stationed in East Boston and intends to.
So, so, so counselor, as you can tell, we've had a slightly long day.
I apologize. Let me jump to it.
Jump to it, please.
I will, I will. I was all prepped for my presentation, Madam Chair, I understand. So this is, as I said, look in the Jeffries Point section to the 3F district. As you can see from the shaded area, if we just jump back to that last slide for a second. The houses both left and right pretty much occupy the relatively shallow lots that exist. We do have some area behind our building that we will propose an infill and then add rear decks, essentially bringing our building back with the decks to the same length of the buildings that are located both left and right. We can go to the next slide, please? You can see our existing condition here, and we do have better view of this. The building to the middle is essentially a four-story building with essentially half-story at the top. We're proposing to finish off that fourth story, which would. We're proposing to finish off that fourth story, which would be consistent with our building immediately adjacent on the left-hand side. We will preserve the existing structure and perform a complete renovation of the entire building. Next slide, please. I'm just showing some neighborhood context as well. As you can see, the area has a number of taller buildings that have been recently developed in the neighborhood.
So, Counselor, how are you proposing to change the occupancy from a two to a four?
Sure, I can go to.
Because I know hiding the story.
Yep, I can go to this slide. Here we go. This is probably a good one. So, you can see here, no, next slide, please. You can see here that the upper level is being modified to essentially square off the existing fourth level consistent with the two buildings to our left. The building to our immediate left has a penthouse condition as well, which is a fifth story. We originally proposed this as a larger penthouse. We reduced that through the community process, and we do have an elevation of that as well. You can go to the next slide, please. Just showing our rear of our building. Again, these buildings, both left and right, pretty much occupy the entire lots. There is a four-foot passageway behind. We would incorporate decks on the rear portion of our building. Next slide, please. So, just showing our existing conditions here, we can probably jump to the next, jump up two slides to show what the renovations will look like. We have those outlined in the next slide. Next slide, please. Oh, next, going forward, probably up to 13, maybe 14. There we go. So, because. Here we go. So, as we're seeing here, both, we're showing the basement and the next two levels, we're not proposing any habitable space in the lower level. At our basement level, we are proposing, you can see the structural elements on the right side of the screen. And then we're renovating Units 1 and Units 2. These would be two-bedroom, two-bedroom, two-bath style units. As we move up the building, next slide, please. We show Unit 3, and then Unit 4 is at the fourth level, where you would enter on the fourth level and have additional space at that upper level, which would be part of that penthouse, so that access to private roof tech. So, essentially, just reprogramming the entire building, adding that addition to the rear, which would infill the back portion of the property, and then squaring off, for all intents and purposes, the fourth level with that penthouse level added above.
And through this non-occupancy of the basement, you meet floodplain regulations?
That is correct. We are in the flood zone, so we are not permitted to utilize any portion of that basement for for any of those conditions. And it's one of the reasons why we're obviously looking to the vertical addition, Madam Chair, which is pretty common throughout the East Boston neighborhood with the floodplain.
How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. I think the addition is consistent with some of the abutting buildings in terms of the filling out of the fourth floor of the penthouse. There is an adjacent that has a similar-sized penthouse. Just to, can I just confirm, when I was looking, so you are looking, is the 18, there's an 18-foot dimension. That's the amount of the added square footage on the floors? I see a third, fourth. You're adding 18 feet of actual enclosed space and then six feet of deck. Is that the addition of the whole space? Or is that, it's kind of a little bit different in the?
Yeah, through the chair, Mr. Robinson, the portion of the building actually has, I believe it's the left side, if we can probably go back to maybe a floodplain, that goes back a lot further. This is more of a, this is probably a good, next slide will be a good period show. Yeah, you can see what the dotted line shows, that the building itself already on the left side goes back further than the right area. So, the renovations are pretty much involving the back portion of the building, but there is a portion of the building that does go back. We're sort of filling in the missing tooth on the right rear portion and then adding the decks to the rear as well.
All right, thank you. No further questions.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. A butter's voice concerns regarding density, height, the penthouse with roof deck and rear addition. The Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association also opposed this project as well. And our office would like to defer to the board's judgment at this time. Thank you.
Hi, do you have a raised hand if we don't have anyone else?
No, Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have some letters of support and some opposition. I don't know if some of these letters are either from the past. There's a few that are in support recently this month.
Madam Chair, I also believe Counselor Edwards, I don't know if they're on, Counselor Edwards' office was going to weigh in on this as well.
Okay.
Hello, Madam Chair, this is Jacob Warner from Counselor Edwards' office. We do want to weigh in for the record, and we do want to express our support for the project. And so, please put down that Counselor Edwards supports the project for the record.
Thank you.
Craig B., go ahead. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, thank you very much for your time. Craig Butler, 59 Webster Street, East Boston. Our family has resided at 59 Webster Street for 23 years, and we are direct abuttered to 57 Webster. Please note, we firmly oppose this project as it's currently proposed. Since the first presentation for this project in June 2020, which was 22 months ago, the developer of 57 Webster Street has been unwilling to listen to the constructive feedback of all the butters, especially the direct abutters at 59 and 55 Webster. The scale of this project, as presented five different times, has always been too large, affecting the natural light, views, and general scale of the adjacent properties on the entire block of Webster. I am referring to the rear addition exclusively, and I don't know if we can go to that rendering. That would be super helpful.
Now, can you please quickly summarize?
Yep.
Okay.
So, generally, they haven't, there's been no dialogue back and forth with direct abutters off, you know, other than the meetings in which they presented this overly sized scheme the entire time.
Okay.
The addition in the back absolutely dwarfs the two abutters, and you can see that in the rendering. And they were never willing to reduce it from, you know, we gave them suggestions to make it a very reasonable three-family, and they never wanted to go to that. It was always, we want a four-family, which is not allowed. Thank you.
And are you in the house at the corner?
Nope, I'm the one to the right. If you go to the rear rendering, that'd be great.
If I'm standing on the street looking at this building, are you on the right or on the left?
I'm sorry, I'm on the left, on the left.
You're on the left, okay.
59 Webster. So, I don't have a problem with that side of the building at all. It's just the rear. And if you go to the rendering, you can see the project dwarfs the.
Got it, thank you.
And I have no additional raised hands.
Okay.
Can I respond briefly, Madam Chair?
Yes, please, go ahead.
I know time is short here. I certainly, with all due respect to Mr. Butler, I mean, I think he said it best himself. We've been at this for quite some time. There were multiple iterations of this project. We have modified the project to try to address the concerns, and certainly there has been dialogue through the abutter process. It seems that, you know, if it's not his way, it's no way, and I know that sometimes that's a difficult order to fill. We think we've done the best here. Based upon the size and dimensions of his building, we were very clear in trying to not exceed anything that he has on his own property, to try to not make this dwarf any of the abutting properties. So, I feel those comments are important, like Mr. Butler's comments.
Thank you. Okay, so, given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve a BPDA disinterrogation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Calling the next two cases, calling DOA 1243750 for Ashmont Park. There is companion case, DOA 126586, 6 Ashmont Park. This is for four and for six. Both of them have the same purpose and same violations. Direct a new four-story building with four units, front and rear decks, and five parking spots at the rear. Easement proposed to driveway access to rear parking. A violation is Article 65, Section 8. MFR in a 3FD zone is forbidden. Article 65, Section 9, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the floor ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building has excessive in stories. Article 65, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. As I said, Madam Chair, both of these have the same purpose and same violations. Oh, I'm sorry. No, they are. They changed them. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Pulgeni on behalf of the applicant. And with me today is Eric Zacherson, who is the team architect. So, 4-6 Ashmont Park in Dorchester, as Mr. Fortune stated, zoning is three-family, 3,000. 4 Ashmont Park is 4,118 square feet.
So, sorry, sorry, please, again, the zoning is, sorry, please repeat what you said.
Sure, the zoning is 3F, 3,000, Madam Chair.
For which, for 6 Ashmont?
For both, for both properties. They're both in the same zoning sub-district.
3F 3,000, okay.
Yep.
For some reason, I thought they were in 3F, tripled, in the triple-decker zone.
Yeah, 3FD, correct, yep, decker.
So, they're both in 3FD, okay, so, okay, so, 3FD with a minimum lot size of 3,000 square feet, got it.
That is correct. So, 4 Ashmont Park.
Go ahead.
4 Ashmont Park is 4,118 square feet. 6 Ashmont Park is 4,216 square feet. So, as Mr. Fortune stated, these are identical projects. The proposal is to raise the existing distressed homes and build a new four-unit condo with five off-street parking spaces located in the rear of the building. The parking will be accessed through a common driveway between buildings to limit curb cut. Currently, there's two, but by doing this, we'll be able to eliminate one of those to add more on-street parking. And the location of these is a three-minute walk to Ashmont Station, and they're located at the dead-end street with no through traffic.
So, but, sorry, I'm, can you tell us about the building, the building scape? Because I know the 3FD district was supposed to be triple-deckers. So, can you tell us what Ashmont Park looks like and how this fits into Ashmont Park?
Yeah, so, Ashmont Park is kind of a blend. There is, on the street, you have a five-unit building. You have some commercial across the street and down two properties. And there's also a vacant lot across the street that at one point had a six-family, and that was destroyed by fire. Then there are single families on the property as well, on the street as well.
Okay, so then talk to us through the, to the violations, then?
Sure. As you remember, this came before you guys, BPDA made a recommendation based upon that. We deferred, so we went back and we looked at the BPDA recommendation and made some changes. As Mr. Earl, excuse me, Mr. Fortune stated, it's the four-family in a 3FD zone. FAR 1.3 is allowed. We have proposed 1.41 at 4 Ashmont, and 6 Ashmont is 1.38, so minimal FAR violations. I got violation, but that is due to having a common driveway?
Yeah, we just want to.
Right, let me find out who that is.
No, no, we have, we are having, you know, we have, you know, and right, we're out.
Okay, we should be all right.
Okay, let's go.
Okay, sorry. The side yard violation is due to that common driveway between the two buildings. And that was purpose for that way, that when they first went out to the community, they didn't want a large building. They wanted two smaller buildings and limit the curb cut, so we did the one curb cut in between. Zone open space.
Okay, okay, so, let me ask, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
The plans are good. I mean, I think most of the buildings, I mean, there's not that many houses on Ashmont Park. They are pitched roof. There is a triple that anchors it far end, but I think no real questions in terms of what's being proposed. Pretty straightforward.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Nguyen with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted in the butters meeting on November 1st last year. We received opposition from the St. Mark's Area Civic Association and the Ashmont Adams Neighborhood Association. We received letters of support and opposition. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have letters of support and opposition. I think Mr. D'Amico has spoken. I still don't know if he's on.
Madam Chair, Salford, Joe McGaughan, City Council, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support of the project.
Okay. Then Doug and Jim, are you here to give testimony on this proposal? Hi, in here? Hi, Doug and Jim? Okay, I'll go to Dale. Send a request to unmute you, Dale. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Dale Centusall, 2 Ashmont Park, a direct abutter. We are totally in opposition. We have a signed letter that we just submitted yesterday because we didn't get the plans for the revisions until yesterday morning. The project is, completely dwarfs the existing houses on the street. In the February 8th meeting, the board was planning on denying it for density. They did absolutely nothing to address the density. There was no decrease in number of units, no decrease in the number of bedrooms, no decrease in the footprint of the building. We have 26 abutters and Neighborhood Association members in opposition to this that I'm speaking on behalf of today. We did submit the revised opposition letter this morning, yesterday. It was added to the record this morning by Ms. Aldigracia.
Okay, okay, thank you. Anybody else to speak on this project?
Madam Chair, has the BPDA opinion changed since, with the design changes?
No, Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Earl. No, the BPDA doesn't change their recommendations. It's still too big for us. We recommend a denial on both parcels.
Madam Chair.
Have you guys actually seen the new proposal?
Please, everybody, Mr. Pulgeni, can you hold on? Can everybody hold on? Can we get testimony from the last, last person who's standing this raised?
Yep, Doug and Jim, go ahead.
Can you hear us now?
Yes, we can, yep.
Okay, thank you. I'm from the, on the executive board of the St. Box Area Civic Association. And at this point, we oppose the project because the developers have not brought their plans either to the abutters, to the Ashmont Adams Civic Association, or to the St. Ox Series Civic Association.
So, hold on, may I ask a question? May I ask a question? When was the last time you were in touch with the applicant?
At our January 25th meeting, when they came before us and we voted against the proposal because of all of the density. We sent a letter to the BPDA.
Yes, yes, can you hold on for a second? Miss Ambassador, may I hear from the last person who's on the, has a raised hand?
Yep, 617287, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman. My name is Bridget Costello, and I live at 222 Ashmont Street. I have lived here for 49 years, and it's directly beside a house on the corner of Ashmont Park. My objection is the amount of traffic. Right now, Ashmont Street is a bit of a nightmare. I actually had to have a no-parking zone put in front of my house to be able to get out of my driveway. Ashmont Park, at the moment, has two cars. Some tenants from the corner, the house on the corner, the five units on the corner, do park on Ashmont Park. There is no way it would sustain 10 cars, but if there's eight units going in, does that mean there could be up to 16 cars? There is just no way that street.
Ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor, have you been in touch with the civic, has the plans changed since you were in touch with the Civic Association in January?
Yes, Madam Chair, the plans changed after we came before the board in February based upon the BPDA recommendation.
And have you been in touch with the Civic Association? And how has it changed? So, that, go ahead.
I'm sorry, so I'll just go through the changes that was when somebody was talking. So, the height, initially, we had a 43-foot height. 40-foot is compliant, we're at 40 feet. Building alignment, we were at three feet off the street. BPDA recommended five, we went to five, so we're five feet off the street. There was an off-street loading, as it was not a path from the parking to the building, and that was added, so that also eliminated that violation. So, we did work through the BPDA. So, we did work to the BPDA design guidelines on what they recommended and did the best we could with that. The, the development team actually spent the time going to the neighbors. Mr. Fortune referenced the support letters. I believe they submitted 27 letters of support that.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Pulgeni. Mr. Hampton, I, we don't have, of course, with these rediscussions of BPDA recommendations, but was density a concern? Because it's, it appears that the applicant has tried to satisfy all the other issues that were raised in the, in the recommendations.
But, density was a concern. It was a concern from a planning and zoning perspective. It's great that they came down in terms of design, but it's still eight units. And as Mr. Pulgeni and this board knows, we only make one recommendation, so, so our recommendation stands.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, we thought the day would get easier, so let's see. Can we have a recommendation?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA designer review.
Is there a second? There is no second, so I need an alternate decision, alternate proposal.
I'll make a motion.
Do we, do we grant belief?
I'll make a motion, deny without prejudice, so they can come back again.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
Okay, I'm in support of the motion, so it's been denied without prejudice, okay? We'll see.
Thank you, everybody.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 128-5392-98.
Yes, yes, yes!
I'm sorry.
The person okay? All right. This is to construct a new single-family home on a vacant lot at 98 Crest Hill Road. The violation is Article 51, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, lot width is insufficient. And Article 51, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Name and address for the record, please.
Afternoon, Madam Chair, Attorney Kurt Blitzer, 300 Market Street, Brighton, Mass. for the applicant. Good afternoon to everybody.
So, Kurt, make it easy on us, okay? Tell us what's being proposed.
So, quite simply, we were before the board on February 8th, February 8th, we took a deferral because of the neighborhood concerns. We're proposing a single-family house on the lot. The issues that we had, we have three areas. The lot area was insufficient, the width was insufficient, and the building height. As a result of the concerns with the neighborhood, we went back to the neighborhood, we reduced the height by three feet. And the biggest issue that they had was owner occupancy versus investors for the neighborhood, and the applicant has agreed to a deed restriction, so that it's an owner-occupant house. I believe that alleviated the neighbor's concerns.
Hold on, Mr. Blitzer, so, you can't, there's nothing you can do about the lot area or the lot width? Can we see a, a rem ring? Can you tell us what sheet we should look at, so we can understand if that's how the building is going to work?
Sure. Sorry, Jake, if you can.
Yeah, tell us which sheet, please.
Jake, if you can go to the, to plot plan first, to the, to the outside, so we can see the lot, the lot measurements. Not, not onto that, but with, with the house in it. So, we are, our lot width, we have frontage, we actually have 51-foot of frontage, but the lot width is about 42 and a half feet wide. Because of the way the lot is situated, it comes off of Parsons Street, the front of the building is on, is on Crest Hill Road. And the side, with the green space, is on, landscape side yard is on Parsons Street. So, lots a little different configuration. So, the frontage is fine, but the other areas on the width are not, they are.
So, this, the counselor, I'm trying to understand, where it says parking one and parking two, are those garage doors, or is it something related to the land and the way it comes?
Right, that's a garage space underneath.
Okay.
So, there's two spaces underneath in the garage, so we've, we had, one of the concerns with the neighborhood was the, the height. We've reduced. The reason the building is high where it's at is because of the fact that we put parking underneath. We thought that would be more, more acceptable and better for, for the house and for the neighborhood, and for, again, for it to be a single-family and have a owner-occupant to come into it. So, that raised the height of the building. But, the lot width, the frontage is fine, it's the rest of the width on the, from the backside that makes it too small.
Got it. Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
I think the plans are good. It's, it is a, there's some topography that they're also dealing with on the site as it slopes down, so, the fact that it's a single-family on, on this corner lot, no real questions on the proposal.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I'm looking at this plot plan, and I'm wondering whether the curb cut, what the, what the size of the curb cut is, and if it could be reduced, so that, so that the cars can be angled somewhat.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Erlich. The curb cut on the actual civil plans and on this would be about 12-foot wide, that would be a BPDA requirement.
Okay, okay, right, from this drawing, it looks like it's the whole width of the driveway.
Yeah, sorry about that, that's my mistake.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, any other questions? Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to refer judgment to the board. It's a background information on the community process. Our office conducted a Butters meetings on August 26th and September 27th. They presented to the Brighton Alston Improvement Association and received their support. They also forwarded a number of letters of support to the board. People were pleased that a one-family would be added to the neighborhood. We did receive one letter of opposition from a group called the Hobart, Hobart Park Neighborhood Association, but in that letter, they said they were remenable to supporting the project if the height was reduced and that there was a deed restriction that was introduced to ensure that it would be owner-occupied. From my understanding, those changes have been made by the applicant, and we believe that that should address their concerns. Once again, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Pam Mulaney, on behalf of City Councilor Liz Braden, would like to go on record in support of this project. As Connor Newman described, the proponents have worked iteratively with the neighbors regarding the strong desire for increased owner occupancy in this neighborhood, which is around 23% owner occupied. On the record, in support. Thank you.
Okay, Annabella Gomes, go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabella Gomes of the Brighton Alston Improvement Association, we'd like to go on record in support. We do think that it's important to build single families. We don't really have too many people coming to us asking to build a single family, and that is the property that would be great for a family to buy and live. Thank you.
Kevin, go ahead. Can you state your name?
Yes. Can I speak now?
Yeah, can you state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Kevin Carrigee, 58 Crest Hill Road, which is the street, so I'm a Directa Butter, and I'm also the president of the Hobart Park Neighborhood Association. I would like to commend the proponent, and the attorney could speak to this. I've been in touch with them multiple times, even today. We would like to have the covenant for owner occupancy be as close as possible to the city's standard owner occupancy covenant. So, for example, we want the covenant to run 90 years, and that's standard.
So, so, hold on, Mr. Carrigee, just know, just know that this board, this Board of Appeal cannot, you know, take and put in its record any kind of understanding that's been developed with the community, but, but thank you for putting that on the record.
Could the attorney representing the proponent speak to the owner occupancy issue, please?
No, 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 we, we, we will, I, I will limit that. We are running very late, and I just do need to bring closure to this. Thank you for your comments.
Okay, I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA designer review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We're calling the next three cases, calling DOA 126-6730, 4 to 18 Cheney Street. There are two companion cases, DOA 1266-73220 to 28 Cheney Street, and DOA 126-6736-3 Schuyler Street. This is for 4 to 18 Cheney Street. This erects a 58,539-square-foot four-story, 59-residential unit building with 28 parking spaces, nine dedicated to 20 to 28 Cheney Street, a garage and basement. The violation is Article 50, Section 19. Use is conditional for nine auxiliary parking spaces at 20 to 28 Cheney Street. Article 50, Section 20, the maximum building height is 45 feet, the proposed is 55. Article 50, Section 20, the maximum floor-to-air ratio is one, proposed is 163. Article 50, Section 40.1, with street wall continuity. And Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking is insufficient. This is for... Sorry. This is for 20 to 28 Cheney Street. Direct a 10,738-square-foot three-story, nine-residential unit building with nine parking spaces in the garage adjacent 4 to 18 Cheney Street. Violation to Article 50, Section 44.2, in existing building alignment, the model calculation not provided. Article 50, Section 28, multifamily is forbidden. Article 50, Section 28, nine auxiliary parking spaces conditional. Article 50, Section 29, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 20, the front yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 20, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient. This is for 3 Schuyler, providing vacant 4, 4,029-square-foot parcel with vacant 2,074 square-foot parcel, totaling 6,103 square feet, and erect a 5,656-square-foot three-story, six-residential unit building with six parking spaces on the lot. The violation is Article 50, Section 28, a multifamily use is forbidden. Article 50, Section 29, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the front yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the side yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 44.2, conforming with existing building alignment. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Tyranda Ellis, from the JPMDC, 31 Germania Street in Jamaica Plain. Just a quick comment.
Hold on, hold on, just for a second, Ms. Ellis. I would like clarification, because for some reason, I thought we had, okay, actually, I'm looking at my notes from the meeting of December 14, 2021, and it looks like at that point, we approved with design review 3 Schuyler Street.
That is correct.
That is correct, right?
Yes.
Oh, so, so we should just make sure that we are right away, let's, can we go ahead and confirm the decision for 3 Schuyler Street?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have the, the notation on the file that it was approved.
Okay, so we, so we do not need to make a decision on this today, so let's X out 3 Schuyler Street, okay? Okay, Ms. Ellis, please, can you go ahead and speak through the, the, the proposal? In the meantime, anybody who has to make comments on this, please make sure you're raising your hand. And I would like to hear from Roxbury Grove Hall residents, because I know there's a lot of people from JP who are interested in commenting, but I'd like to make sure that residents from the budding streets and budding Cheney are being heard, okay? So, go ahead, Ms. Ellis, talk to us about 4 to 18 and 20 to 28.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank members of the board for the early deferral on this. There have been several meetings with residents of the community subsequent to our meeting back in December. The project proposal at this point, as I understand it, we have submitted over 100 letters of support from residents in the immediate.
Sorry, Ms. Ellis, it's been a while since we've heard this, so please tell us, describe the project, tell us if anything has changed since the time you were here.
Okay, thank you. So, what I will say is that since the time we were there, since we were last with this group, we have had several meetings of, of members of the community, and we have worked through a number of the concerns that the, the community raised. So, I will be brief, given the, you know, the, the level of intense conversations. What I will say is that we have proposed the, this campus, which we looked at previously, of a senior housing solution along with some homeownership, and so if we could just scroll to the, the site plan, we can kind of all re-familiarize. Who is controlling the slides? If we could go slide down, then? Here we go. Next slide, please. So, we proposed a multi-functioning campus. Here is the senior building at the middle of the site on Cheney Street, 59 units, and then adjacent to that, just immediately to the left, is the homeownership. I will just say, I'm going to defer to questions by the community. I, I think you will be very surprised and pleasantly surprised at the board, you will hear from the community that we are in a very good space, so I don't want to take a lot of time.
So, let me just ask, if, my, so, so, the, the project at 4, 4 to 18 is proposed as elderly housing?
Yeah.
And the other ones are proposed as homeownership?
Correct.
It looks like we, the, the requests from the last time you were here, you did say it was lead silver, all, all-electric, and we did, I think the question was, or the request to you was to study the massing? And also, I think the question was about all the, about the parking and drop-off?
That's correct. And so, Madam Chair and members of the board, one of the things that we feel very strongly about as a community, working with the residents of the neighborhood, was to maintain parking, kind of raised parking, it's not effectively a garage, but it is elevated parking to allow for enough parking below the surface of the, the senior building to support, you know, making sure that we can get cars off the street. Cheney is a very dense street, as you know, you're well aware, and members of the community spoke very much about that. So, I would like to say that we believe that we're in a very strong place with the community, we're going to continue to work with the community, but I do think that unfortunately, COVID didn't allow for there to be some substantive conversations about the site. We've since had those, since the board hearing in December.
Okay, and can you tell us how drop-off will pick, will happen for the elders?
Sure, so we have designed the building such that the ground level below the surface of the, just adjacent to the parking lot, has elevator access and, and primary entrance, so part, cars can pull off of Cheney Street, drive, pull into the parking area here, as you're seeing it, and seniors can be easily and accessibly access the building. I think that's a huge improvement with the elevator access, along with a nice vestibule for the accessible, you know, vans or small vans for pickup and drop-off. I think that's going to make a, an immediate impact in a positive way.
Okay, and then, tell us about the homeownership. Are they all affordable?
Yes, ma'am. All units that we build are 100% affordable, and we'll continue to work on design aesthetic with the members of the community and ensuring that we are doing things that are equitable and, and responsible to the and responsible to the homeowners as they would perceive their needs for homeownership amenities.
And I think one of the things that was brought up too the last time was that there are a lot of elders in the community. Will there be any kind of way of making sure that those elders are housed in a community that they know and they might have lived in for a period of time?
So we often work very diligently with the affirmative fair housing marketing team to ensure that we are setting aside units for priority. We cannot explicitly overlay a complete neighborhood set aside. But there are ways and avenues that we'll work with the fair marketing team to ensure that we are putting the best face forward on both the amenities. These seniors will have access to nursing care through a pace alternative center. They will have Wi-Fi and as we know from COVID, you know, a lot of the technical assistance that individuals will need as if there were any barriers to care will be available on-site.
And what age do you consider elders?
Well, I don't know, I can only speak for myself. I'm pushing 55 mark. But we are, we are getting to that place where we're evaluating early planning, let's say. So we are looking at 55-plus for residents of this community. We fully expect that this will be an age and dignity site where we will have adequate open, open space as well as indoor community space for, for all of us who are pushing the silver wave.
Okay, nice. Okay, is anybody here, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The, the plans look good. I was not seated at the last time this came through and I think it's actually quite nicely stepping along the street. And I think the van access in sort of, on a sort of quiet place is a very nice aspect to it. So I think it, no questions. I think it's quite a nice proposal. Thank you.
Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Jason Gant, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. So this was a BPDA facilitated process, but as was highlighted on the last time that they were before the Board, they were supposed to go back out and reach out to the community, which they have done at the Sonoma Maple and Schuyler Street Neighborhood Association meeting on January 3rd. And then they hosted their own meeting for the neighborhood to attend on February 22nd. They've also been before Project Right numerous times and also most recently Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association. I do know that Mike Kozu sent in a conditional letter of support from Project Right for this project that should be received by the Board. I believe that was sent over. The conditional sport was just primarily highlighting the fact that they do want to continue working with JP NDC around the number of units and just making sure that it is conducive to what the neighborhood would like to see. And JP NDC has confirmed that they would definitely continue those communications and then also CC myself with those as well. So we are going to be deferring to the expertise of the Board for this matter. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary, here we do have those letters that the Mayor's Office just spoke of.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I have a few raised hands. We also have a letter from, it just came in in the afternoon, but from Councilor Bernadette Anderson, Mahia Boosie. They sent one letter in support of the proposal. It should have been sent to an email, but I'll open it up to the floor as well. Mike, do you want to start? Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Michael Kozu, Project Right, 320, a letter A, Blue Lloyd Avenue. We are, we've been engaged with JP NDC for a couple-year process in getting a budding and nearby residents involved in this process. Clearly, we've worked through a number of issues. We want to continue to work through these issues as, as we go forward. So we're looking forward to continuing this process and we will work closely as we move forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Roy Thompson? Go ahead, Roy. Hi, Roy, can you hear me? Still be on mute? Melissa Lisa, second. Send a request to unmute you. Okay, I go.
Good afternoon. Is this me? This is Louis Lisa, 68 Seaver Street, President of Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association. Forty-three years working continuously in the Garrison Trotter area. We just want to thank the Board for the opportunity to meet again and have, to have the time to meet with JP NDC to work out the issues. I think we've come to a resolution that's workable for all sides and mostly on behalf of the seniors who would be occupying the space and for the residents in the community. And I think that this type of interactive communication can work for other projects if, if given the time. So thank the Board and we're in support of the proposal, which is, have been written up in support of DND for calling the last meeting on this project. Thank you.
Okay, Soladat, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, Soladat Boyd, 4 Nazin Court, Dorchester 02121. I am here in support of the project. Thanks very much to the JP NDC for continuing to listen to the community. As someone who is reaching that elderly planning stage, I am in full support of this project and believe that it will provide much-needed, affordable senior housing as well as community-wide housing. And I appreciate everyone for digging in and staying with the process.
Yeah, Michael from Rat Malia's office, go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I apologize for not speaking before. I had stepped out. This is Michael Giordano from Rat Malia's office. The representative was very pleased that developers and the community were able to meet and negotiate an agreement on this project. I would like to go on record in support of both of the Cheney Street JP NDC projects proposed today contingent upon the continued and active engagement with residents and other leaders in the community. Thank you.
Jessica Boulbray, are we going to give testimony here?
Yes. Good afternoon, Jessica Boulbray. I'm the Deputy Director for Housing Development at the Mayor's Office of Housing. Wanted to speak in support of this project and JP NDC's efforts to create affordable senior housing, affordable homeownership, and as they've discussed, onsite-paced senior services for both residents of the building and the surrounding neighborhood. We are, as others have said, we're really encouraged by JP NDC's efforts to engage with members of the surrounding community, with, with members of local neighborhood associations and their work, especially their work with Project Right and Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association and the Butters. We are enthusiastic about their commitment to continue to work with these folks.
Jessica, thank you. I'm sorry, we just are so busy today.
No, it's fine, it's fine.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, Christina Martinez.
Hi, my name is Christina Martinez. I'm at 74 Geneva Ave. I'm heavily, I heavily support the project. We need affordable senior housing and affordable homeownership opportunities. And that's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Kamalu, go ahead.
Hi, this is Kamalu Kieka from District 7, City Councilor, Hanyan's Office. We want to go on record in support of this project. JP NDC has done a really good job of listening to the community voice and engaging with the community and would hope they continue that.
Thank you. And then I do have a call. I'm sorry, 6174427004, go ahead. Okay, maybe no longer wants to mesh up. They still want to give testimony.
Madam Chair, Paul Sullivan, President of Council, Lodge Michael Flaherty, to go on record in support.
I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Okay, let's get a motion here.
Motion to approve of BPDA Design Review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I suggest, Ms. Ellis, and to continue your conversations with the community so that everything stays on track, okay? Good luck.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, members of the Board. Thank you, members of the community. We'll, we'll be in touch next week for our meeting.
Thank you.
Hey, Board members, guess what is? It's the last case of the day.
Anyone?
No more time.
Hey, BOA, 126, 8903, 18 to 20 Parkman Street. This is demo of the existing structure, construction of a new, of a nine new residential dwelling units with 17 off-street parking spaces. The violation is Article 65, Section 8. A multifamily residential dwelling use is forbidden. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the height requirement is excessive in stories. And Article 65, Section 42.2, conforming with existing front alignment of the block. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, in line at the six-member, six-member Board, I wish to request an administrative deferral.
Motion to defer. Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
You'll have a date of April 26 at 11:30.
Mr. Fortune, I'm sorry, could we request a later date? I think that we may also wish to revise plans.
Okay, we can do 5/24. Is that sufficient enough for you?
What would be the date after that? Is there?
We're into June, so give me two seconds. I got to look at the list.
And I ask only because if there are revisions, the plans examiner is going to have to review them.
We can do June 21st at 11:30.
Let's do that, please.
Okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll see you then. Thank you for making our game, Mr. Moranci.
You're welcome. Have a good day.
Everybody, thank you so much for.
Recording stopped.
On this meeting.
Recording in progress.
Be good about a few weeks, okay? Bye. Thanks.